... meeting, March 7th, to order. If everyone will please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of Silence.
Silence is hard to come by in this day and age.
All right, we're at the adoption of the agenda. Entertain a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
You have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Are there any agenda meetings we need to be concerned about?
No, sir.
I couldn't remember any.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next is Presentations. I understand Dr. Grimsley is on vacation. The superintendent report is online on Board Docs.
That is correct.
And all I can say is, go Panthers!
Go Panthers!
Coach Jeff Atkins did a great job the other night and got his teams out there playing, and I hope they will be extremely successful tonight in the semifinals. Come if you can, but you have to have your ticket before you show up. Next, we have the Library Board of Trustees Annual Presentation. Victoria?
Yes.
It's okay.
Hi, everyone. I'm Victoria Fortuna. I'm the President of the Library Board of Trustees, for those of you who don't know me. And we also have Maureen, who's a member, Maureen Harris, is a member of the Library Board of Trustees, and Amanda, who's the Library Director. Oh, and also Gil, who is the manager, who's the treasurer of the Friends of the Library. And the Friends have been instrumental in helping us accomplish some of our goals this year. So I sent you our annual activity report, which is pretty much in the same form that we've presented the past couple of years. I'm not really going to talk about the numbers so much, but I am going to go over our accomplishments for the year and some of the things we'd like to accomplish in this year, in this fiscal year, or in this calendar year, really. So this year, we extended our partnerships. We partnered with the Mental Health Association to distribute books and information packs during the Mental Health Awareness Month. We also partnered with the PATH Foundation to distribute kindness books, encourage kindness with our younger patrons. We hosted with the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission a nonprofit informational digital display monitor, and that's an ongoing project. You'll see it in the library, announcing various nonprofit information pieces and anything, really, that they want to post there. Under the guidance of Virginia Department of Health, we distributed approximately 600 COVID-19 at-home test kits to our residents. And then, working with the Headwaters Foundation, we recently brought Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, which is an early literacy program, to Rappahannock youth. And this basically mails out books to children ages zero to five years. And currently, we have 95 children signed up for the program. As far as upgrades to library services, we replaced, with the help of a generous PATH grant and a grant from the Friends of the Library, all the library computers, including those staff, as well as computers that the public uses. And we received an ARPA sub-grant monies, which we use to purchase easily sanitized and furniture, comfortable furniture, because that was one of the things that came up in our survey. And we also purchased some small carols so that people could have a little more privacy if they were working in the library. We also commenced our renovation and expansion project. And for this, we also received a generous PATH grant and a grant from the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation in excess of $15,000 to conduct our community survey and scan. We held about 15 meetings, and we received about 500 responses from the community on our questionnaire. And we've learned quite a lot of things about the expectation that our community has for our library services and future expectations about what things we might be able to bring. So we started the design program with Antero's, using the information we received from the community survey. We set up a list of things that we'd like to see in the library. And Gil Ensaminger from Antero's came and basically put pen to paper, gave us a preliminary design, and we did sort of a engineering light study on the property itself, excuse me, to see if it would actually fit on the property. We weren't really satisfied with the design, so we decided to pause the program because we don't know where we're going to go from here. As you all know, Mr. Akre has expressed interest in possibly including the library in his development at Rush River Two. I met with him twice to discuss this, and basically, we agreed to just continue to talk to each other. He said that once it became clear what his situation was at that property, he would give us, like, a term, terms and conditions sheet of what, you know, what he would expect from us and what we could expect from him. So we decided that we didn't want to spend any of our money that patrons had given us over the years to continue to pursue something on the current site when we don't really know what the situation is and whether it would make more sense to move. So that's where we are on that project. If any of you are interested, I believe the Antero's design is still up on the library We improved visibility of library services. We increased our outreach with monthly articles and notices to the local news outlets, both the Rappahannock News and Mad Rep. We've also increased our online visibility and opportunities through social media. We included some new job resources, services, and student resources, and veteran resources for job search. And we also have some new educational streaming opportunities and downloads, and those are all on the current library website. We increased availability of circulating various items that patrons can rent out. We had steam kits, and I'm supposed to tell you that Gary objects to the word steam because he doesn't like the arts part of it.
He loves art.
He loves art, but he doesn't want to call it a steam. They just don't go together with the men, engineering and math.
He is a special engineer.
But anyway.
Softening.
And musical instruments, book bundles, and craft kits. And we plan on continuing to offer those and also expand some of these offerings as we can. Then, in terms of ongoing library business, we resumed our normal COVID, normal hours after COVID, and we have had some, especially last summer, we had some in-person programming that was COVID-conscious, and people, the patrons really appreciated that. We presented programs to local preschools. We've updated and adopted some library policies. We received a PATH Better Together grant and hosted a successful outdoor event with over 100 attendees last summer. It was a great ice cream event with lots of things, and we want to thank PATH because we really appreciate it. We appreciate all the help. And also, we have a young man from the high school, Wes Faxlander, who is helping out our patrons with computer issues, and that's paid for by the Friends of the Library. So in summary, we applied for and received funds for various projects and improvements in excess of $46,000 for the year. And the Library Board of Trustees, as a board, not the officers or Gary, volunteered approximately 1,000 hours of their time over the course of the year to help library business. So a couple of things I wanted to highlight about our budget request for fiscal year 2023. We have included $16,800 for a part-time library assistant, $15 an hour, 20 hours a week, 52 weeks of the year with VICA, no other benefits. The rationale that we've included that in our budget request to you is that we've had a couple of threatened phone calls to our librarians threatening sexual battery or sexual assault. And we talked to the Sheriff's Department about it. They recommended that we not have, to the extent possible, only one person at the building. For all the years that I've lived in Rappahannock County, there are many times when there have been only one person, only one librarian in the library at the time. And that's not safe, as Captain Jones pointed out to me, that's not really safe for any purposes to just have one person there because something could happen. So that's one of the reasons. We also would like to, when we got the community survey back, people would like to see more programs for children of all ages, and it's difficult to offer those things without having coverage for the phones and the desk. So, and also, two of our librarians have maxed out on their vacation accruals. They don't take vacation because they don't want to inconvenience their other team members. And so, giving, allowing us to have one part-time person will introduce a lot of flexibility into the library's scheduling process and enable people to have more ability to take vacation that they've earned, and also give us some flexibility with regard to offering some of these other programs while still having phones and desk and the other patron services covered. And one last thing I wanted to say is that, I have to say that Gary has been just so amazingly, incredibly helpful to us all year round. He tells, he keeps us on track. He helps us out with all kinds of FOIA stuff. He knows so much about everything going on in the county. And when our HVAC system crashed recently, he was able to get some insurance money to help us pay for that, for all the repairs. So, I mean, I just want to thank Gary very much for all the wonderful help he's given us.
I would like to say that the Library Board noticed this as a meeting today because they might have three more people here.
Yeah.
Forget more, you learn.
Yeah. So I just wanted to let you know that I think you guys have a great resource at your hands, and we can't say enough about them. So thank you very much, and do you have any questions?
Victoria, first of all, the young man who you mentioned, who you've hired-
Yes.
-to help provide citizens with IT support, I'll probably be the next in line. I had a neighbor down the road who couldn't say enough nice things about him-
Great.
-called him a wizard and said, I mean, to have a young person like that who is really fully caught up on technology and to have that resource has really been a great help. And my constituent mentioned it's advanced in years, and so it really, it really meant a lot to him to get that kind of help.
Yeah, we have a lot of patients that are like that. So we really felt the lack of that when we didn't, when we didn't have that service.
I think it's a great service. And then my, my only other, I guess, comment is, there's, since Mr. Akre mentioned the possibility of the library moving, I know I've heard from at least a handful of constituents who, on the one hand, will say the library in its current form is perfect, why would we need anything else? Separate from that, I attended those meetings with the architect, and so I certainly understand that libraries today are different than they were when I was growing up. And so, I mentioned to those constituents that you've all been very thoughtful in trying to bring a revamped or rebuilt library sort of into the, into current times. And so I guess my only, my only concern there, and I just offer it for the time being, and I know you put planning and architectural review on hold, but in my view, this is a county of little or incremental change, and if there is a reasonable, cost-effective way to work with the site that you, where you are currently located, I certainly would encourage that, I mean, within reason. I understand it's not the easiest lot, but a lot of people have both a sentimental and practical attachment to the building as it currently exists, so I just hope you'll keep that in mind and not abandon it completely.
We are keeping, yeah, no, no, we're definitely keeping that in mind, and certainly, some member, we don't really, the Library Board of Trustees, the members really haven't made a decision one way or another. There's trade-offs, obviously. If we're doing a major renovation, we're going to have to close.
Yeah.
And so that brings up a lot of issues, you know? How long will, you know, the county tolerate a library being closed in order to renovate it? Because it's a significant renovation. So that's one issue.
Yeah.
I invite you to check the, the design out. Obviously, it's just a preliminary design. We could, you know, do, maybe do some other things. We haven't gone back to them because, again, you know, we're trying to be very conservative with the monies that we have for designing and planning this project. And so, you know, we don't want to just run with one thing and spend a whole lot of money if we don't really know what all the, all the options are, because that doesn't really make sense.
Right.
And that's all I have to say about that.
Yeah. Thanks for everything.
Thanks.
Would you mind giving a quick recap on the Dolly Parton program? That's one that I'm definitely excited about.
So, okay, so children can, any child's parents can apply for the program. And basically, once they're accepted out, there's no financial requirements or anything like that. They will receive a book in the mail once a month, right? Yeah, once a month. And it's a free book, and it's financed, well, the Friends of the Library gave some money, and also Headwaters gave some money, because there is a cost to providing that benefit, but it's mostly underwritten by Dolly Parton's Foundation. And that goes until the child reaches age five, so, I mean, I, yeah.
So parents with young children should contact the library of their kids?
Yes, yeah, they contact Amanda. She's been signing up people and helping them with, you know, getting, getting signed up for the program, so, yeah.
Thank you. Anything else?
Madam Chair, I had a question or two. Back to the renovation versus relocation.
Yes.
I know that you said that the talks are on hold, but had you ever got far enough into the discussion of whether you would have a piece of property that was owned by the Library Board fee simple, or would it be a long-term ground lease?
We, so, the only thing that Mr. Akre said to me was that it would be a lease of the property. It wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't own the property, we would own the building. But that's the only thing he said, but I don't, you know, that could change. In other words, we're just talking. No, we have not received any terms and conditions written, you know? We just, obviously, if he wants to build a community center, the library is a big draw there. And there's some overlap with, like, meeting, having a meeting or having a presentation from a local author, if there's, you know, a nice amphitheater or a, you know, a meeting room or something like that there. I don't, I don't know if you all have been up to-
What I was going towards is that you'd be giving up a piece of property that you own fee simple for something that you don't own.
Yeah, that's a consideration, you know?
A lot of people I know are opposed to that, very, very adamantly.
That topic came up in our meetings, and it's one that we realize is a critical issue.
We realize that that's an issue, so, yeah, it'll certainly be part of, on the evaluation of what our alternatives are, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's a good alternative. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have public comment. We have five minutes or less, and when you come up to speak, raise your hand first, please. We'll recognize you've come up to the mic, so everyone can hear. Let us know your name and the district you're in, please. Anyone wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Board Members. I'm glad you take time to listen to everyone, and again, it's a pleasure to be here to speak to the Board. First off, I want to congratulate-
Tommy Atkins from Jackson District, Krieger.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I thought you already knew me, Karen.
We do, but not everyone does, so.
Okay, good enough, good enough. We can handle that. I'm Tommy Atkins. I am from the Jackson District, and I live in Amersville, Virginia, of course. I want to congratulate the Rappahannock High School, the girls' basketball program. And I also want to congratulate the young man that's the head coach, Jeff Atkins, there. I think he's done a splendid job, outstanding job with the school system there, and I think he's teaching the young girls not only how to play basketball, but how to be grown-up women and better citizens of the world when they come out into the world, to the work world, because I wholly support sports. It is a big building block for people, both men and women, boys and girls, as they come through life. I also want to congratulate the boys' basketball team. They had a successful season. They didn't make it quite as far as the girls have made it. And I, first, second up, I want to hope and we pray that the girls will continue to win tonight, and then go on to Richmond and win the state championship. I do hope that they do that. I think it will not only be good for the, for the girls, be good for the community. And, all right, back, I do, I know that on the boys' team, they had two young men that surpassed 1,000 points in their, in their basketball career this year. So that's, that's pretty good. In fact, it's outstanding for a small school like Rappahannock High School. All right, I would like to ask, how many people in this room today that are Rappahannock alumni? Aye for one.
Alumni of the high school?
Okay. I ask, I applaud those, but also, I need to ask you a question. You need to think about it. What does that say about the makeup of our county? What does it say about the makeup of our county?
Could you repeat the question?
Yes. What question?
How many people do-
I asked, the question was, how many people in here are Rappahannock alumni? They have graduated from Rappahannock High School?
Thank you.
Second, I published it, how many has gone all the way through the Rappahannock school system? And aye for one, I definitely don't know.
Mr. Atkins?
Could it have been the opportunity?
Well, I just, I feel sorry for you.
Mr. Atkins?
I didn't do it.
Okay.
Sorry, didn't interrupt.
Didn't say you didn't, but I just ask you again, think about it. What does that say about the makeup of the people in Rappahannock County? Are they the only natives in this county? I leave it to you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Next? Yes, sir.
Don't forget to introduce yourself.
It's really for the people listening in, not for the press.
My name is Anderson, Mark Anderson. I'm from the Piedmont District, and I'm here to speak to item H7 on the agenda, which is the broadband authority. I hope I'm okay to speak a public comment now. I have reason to believe some of you are in contact with the members of that board right now. So I'm talking about this resolution. That's the only item on the agenda, as far as I know, for the broadband authority. Kudos to Mr. Fraser for bringing this up. It was hard to put together. Having said that, I recommend you not act on it today as a broadband authority. I think you need to give it a little bit of time to stew, and I'll tell you why I think that. In my view, the resolution is both too aggressive and too slow at the same time. Too aggressive because it's like blunt trauma to unleash on All Points Broadband and possibly the Regional Commission, and too slow because I think there's other steps that need to take place in the month of March anyway and into April. An old lawyer I worked for 40 years ago said, "Mr. Goff, it is always better to rattle before you strike." And I take that to mean, the broadband authority used to rattle a little bit more before we dropped this resolution on the people I mentioned. What I think we need to do is send a letter this week, hopefully, not a mean lawyer letter, but a kindly letter, saying there are certain items of information we need to have, that we need to hold a meeting with key individuals, and we need to do it soon, hopefully, later than the next broadband authority meeting, which I take to be two weeks from today, the 21st of March. I think we could get that letter together this week. There's been a bunch of proposed questions put together from various sources. I've never seen the consolidated list. I hope somebody has it, because I haven't seen it. And we make that an attachment to the letter. We need to have them start working on the answers to these questions, I think. Also, I strongly recommend you consider a town hall meeting where those two individuals are present and everybody in the audience gets a chance to ask questions. And I say that because there's an awful lot of confusion, disinformation, whatever, on the blogs about exactly what this project's about, and what's going to happen, what's not going to happen. And I think that would be a good way to address it. People have questions, they want to get them answered. They may not necessarily be questions that the broadband authority would pose, but it takes patience. You've got to deal with the public on this. The people that have backed this proposal expect us, the broadband authority, I mean, to use due diligence. We have a 90-day period to use due diligence to try to figure out if we want to proceed with this. 30 days, as Mr. Fraser's pointed out, is already gone. And what do we have to show for that 30 days? We have a two-page draft communication strategy, and as far as I know, that's the only document that has happened yet. A meeting was held between the Regional Commission and the VODI people on 5 February. That's what started the running of the 90 minutes. As far as I know, we were not represented at that meeting. Possibly, none of the counties were represented at that meeting or had a chance to ask questions. If, in fact, the Regional Commission is covering for us, I expect them to do more than show up at a meeting and nod their head and collect the $400,000 they're going to take out of this contract. I expect them to be vigorous advocates for the eight counties they represent, and I hope that the broadband authority does as well. After the town hall meeting, I would like to get back a list, responses to the questions by the time of the 21st of March broadband meeting. I would like to see a draft contract come in sooner than the 18th of April. I think that's far too late. If we don't see the, the actual final draft contract until then, we won't have time to respond to it. Our council won't, we won't, we won't be able to take the questions that have been raised and make sure they're covered in some fashion, or decide what we can live with and what we can't live with. And then, if you get to that point, now's the time to bring out that sort of drop-dead resolution and lay it on them. And lastly, I hope somewhere there is a consulting engineer that's on our side of this project, because as far as I know, the only engineers involved are the ones who are working for All Points Broadband. I would like to hear that the Regional Commission has hired one for that $400,000 they're taking out of this contract. I checked all their credentials, and surprised, they're all urban planners. I was an urban planner student once myself at a great university that Mr. Whitson knows about, but it's a mushy science. I'm sorry, it is. And these guys can't stand up to a bunch of engineers on a hard project involving real data. So I hope they do hire one to protect us, and if they don't, we need to find out why they won't do it. So I hope they do hire one to protect us, and if they don't, we need to find out why they won't do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Put up a form of motion.
Next, anyone? Yep.
Paige Glenny, Jackson District. Normally, I agree with you, Mark, but not this time. I strongly support Mr. Fraser's resolution. At this point, that's the only leverage you have, all right? They're not going to do anything without it. Many of those questions should have been answered long ago, well, even before you signed the MOU. There's basic questions like, even like, what type of contract is it? Is it fixed price, time and material? So I will only concede three reasons why someone would not support that resolution. One, acquisition, lack of acquisition knowledge such that you don't realize that your only leverage is not taking the thing. You've boxed yourself into a hole. You have no other leverage. You're not a signatory on the contract. The Regional Commission doesn't even report to you. You're not even in their commission. Second one, I'm blanking out. You don't believe that they actually will ever answer the questions. And consequently, you don't want to end the project. And the third one is, you really don't care about the constituents' questions. And I'm sorry, but I can't come up with another reason why not to support this resolution. And none of those three reasons are good. Not a one of them. And, you know, as I've said before, people are watching, and they will reflect it in the election when it comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, he had already raised his hand. We'll get you next.
Good afternoon. Robert Yow, Piedmont District. And I just want to echo what Mr. Anderson said and what Mr. Glenny said. I strongly support, I think Ron's resolution. I think these are valid questions that need to be answered. And you need, you need to, you need to meet with them. And if they're not willing to meet with you, that's a serious problem, at least in my opinion. So I think you need to either consider this resolution. I can see Mr. Anderson's point of view and maybe giving a little more time. That's kind of a gamble, in my opinion. It could pay off, but it could not pay off. So you need to force their hand in a way. Force them to come to the table, force them to meet with you. I like the idea of a potential town hall. Force them to come to the citizens and answer serious questions that need to be considered. The second thing I wanted to speak on, which I'll express my support of, is the item on the agenda that deals with the Lord Fairfax update. If I'm not mistaken in the agenda, there is a proposal or a proposed letter to send to the governor's office, if I'm not mistaken, to express the county's disagreement with the name change. And I support, I don't know what good it's going to do, but I support the effort to draft that letter and send it to them. I think that the name change is a ridiculous idea in this day and age. And people don't know the history, then they need to read the books. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Roy Ellis, Stonewall Hawthorne District. Sorry, I was a little late for the meeting. I was driving slow, trying to save gasoline. So far as I know, bringing broadband to the county is the most expensive project the county has ever undertaken. And there doesn't seem to be much information coming forth from broadband authorities, government representatives. Based on the price tag and general contracting procedures, you'd think there was detail and timelines and agenda for this entire thing, front to back, to award a contract and get a signing of a contract. Doesn't seem to be happening, unless maybe the public's not getting information that you all have. I don't know. Even the designation of the APB to be the contractor, are they competent to do this job? I don't know how they were picked. Was there competition from three or four potential contractors? Makes you wonder how APB popped to the top to spend all this money. Time is of essence. We know the devil's in the details. One question begs another, and there's not a lot of time between now and the 5th of May. Especially if you're going to try to do it through email or once-a-twosie phone calls between you guys. You need a Zoom call about twice a week or something. Meetings, personal meetings, I don't know. The RCBA should be bigly informed as to details regarding the broadband effort, things like NOUTS, oversight authority for monthly service cost, third-party review of contractor competency to deliver on a project this size and so on. Board supervisors should not be underserved, stampeded, or coerced into a contract or other counties hiring a broadband infrastructure expert. How are they proceeding along these lines? I agree with the resolution to pull out. Probably best for the county to wait until all board members are comfortable with the contractual effort, even if that requires sitting out for a year. It's a little disconcerting to see this much money being spent and the board not unified. So I agree with, thank you, Ron, for your resolution, and I support that. On the LFCC thing, I appreciate Christine. I think you've submitted a letter, proposed letter to the proper authorities regarding that. Glenn DuBois of the Virginia State Community College System is quoted as saying, "Today, I don't know why anyone would want to name a community college after a British lord," DuBois said. "It just doesn't make sense." It seems that DuBois felt anointed to rewrite history to his liking. Thankfully, he's in a small minority, as most citizens don't feel this way. Most citizens have a high interest in protecting history as first recorded, and most can assimilate and evaluate a historical event, giving due balance to the good and bad characteristics of the event. Culture, history, and tradition are embroidered into the psyche of most Americans." We should continue with that. U.S. Representative Bob Good wrote to DuBois in April urging the state to keep the Lord Fairfax name. Efforts such as these encourage an endless cycle of renaming institutions, buildings, and cities across the country under the ruse of political wokeness. So I support Christine's effort and really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Heller, Piedmont District. I'm here to speak about the broadband issue. One of the reasons I'm here today at 2:00 in the afternoon is because my internet crashed and I can't get any work done. And while I am not apprised of all of the objections and problems that people are concerned about with the process of going forward, I would say that I do not have confidence in ViaSat or HughesNet or Starlink. I frequently question their confidence in their business model. And I would urge everybody on the board to look for solutions rather than find problems. I think that internet in this county is an incredible handicap. It's one of the reasons that young people don't stay here, because they can't work remotely. And so we need to really do our best to make this happen. Whether it's this plan or it's a viable alternative, I don't know. I don't know enough about it. But something has to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara.
John Peardsey, Wakefield District. I understand the frustration about the lack of information. I understand the frustration that the clock is ticking and that we don't have a whole lot of time to get all the questions answered. But I really think we need to keep our eyes on the prize here. We have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to connect this county to the modern world. It's not an unprecedented thing in the past. There's been federal money made available for rural free delivery. Remember, you get mail every day from the post office, thanks to a federal initiative. There was rural electrification, and we're on the brink of another infrastructural change here that really needs to happen. And yes, pursue the questions actively and to a resolution. But please don't dawdle. Don't step back. Just push on, and let's get this done.
Thank you.
My name is Nala Putnam. I'm from the Wakefield District. When I was four years old in 1938, I was taken by my parents to rural northwestern Connecticut. There was no electricity. My parents were the third family to live on the road. They were welcomed because that meant we could get electricity from the federal government. Here we are in 2022, and we're on a whole new threshold. We have electrons zipping all over the world, case with Ukraine now. And I think that if Rappahannock County does not seize this opportunity, you're going to be finding yourselves in a very small backwater. For the children, for people who do business, this seems to be the wave of the future. We're going to run out of oil. How else are we going to communicate with anybody else? So I understand you don't have the questions answered yet. I don't know why that is. Not my province. Please, don't throw this out yet. It's the baby in the bath water. It's too precious. And this county is too precious to move into the future with all the help we can get.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the courtroom? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Dan Lanigan from Hampton District. I'm speaking today about the proposed resolution regarding the withdrawal from the VODI grant consortium. I think there's general agreement that reliable, affordable, high-quality broadband is needed throughout the county, and today it's sorely lacking. As we found out when last year, many, perhaps even most, of the schoolchildren found themselves sitting in cars at hotspots in front of churches, government buildings, restaurants, to do their class assignments and to get their homework done because they didn't have broadband capability at home. Numerous adults have found themselves in the same situation because the pandemic closed their work locations. This grant, coupled with APB's investment, Mr. Akre's very generous donation, and other smaller grants, gives us a wonderful opportunity to acquire reliable, high-speed broadband for the vast number of undisturbed locations in the county and at a very minimal cost to county taxpayers. We must not give up this opportunity. It's unfortunate that we have not yet been able to get answers to the many outstanding questions that residents have raised regarding the fiber broadband solution proposed by APB. However, I believe it's inappropriate to be issuing an ultimatum that if we don't get all the answers to all the questions right now, we're going to withdraw from this consortium. That would be a huge mistake. Rather, we must continue by pressing hard for answers, as other people have indicated earlier today. If we withdraw, we'd be passing up an opportunity to get something we very greatly need and at a very reasonable cost to us, an opportunity that's probably not going to come again. I urge you to vote against this proposal when it comes forward for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Constance Bruce, Little Washington, Hampton. I just want to add to those other points. I urge you not to approve this resolution. I have grandchildren who have just moved here. I have children who work remotely, and they have bought property, and it is critical to them to even have them stay here, that we have the broadband, not next year, not in two years from now, but as soon as we can get it. So I agree with others. It's the affordability, and the issue is you need to continue trying to get answers to those questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Goldfarb from Hampton District. And first, thank you all for the opportunity for speaking, and thank you for all the work that you've done on this. It is a huge frustration to all of us that we don't have broadband yet, and I really appreciate all the work that you all have done. And that the questions haven't been answered is really frustrating to all of us. And like people have spoken before, I have no idea why that is. But I really hope that we will be able to pursue this opportunity, because by not doing that, it's just going to push it further down the road, and we don't know what other opportunities will come along or what cost it will be to us. If there's anything that we can do to help do that, please call at us. I don't know whether it's a town hall or writing letters to the company with whom you're working, but we need broadband. And yes, the kids sat outside, and we were all cut off. And as an aging population, and one of the members of that aging population, broadband, just like the mail was and electricity was, it's our link. It's our link to our families. It can be our link to our doctors. And if we don't have that, then many people in this county will be cut off. And I really, really urge you to vote against the proposal, but to push forward in getting the questions answered, because there are very important questions, and we need those answered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No one else in the courtroom? I think you already spoke, Tommy. Let me get the folks online. Thank you. We're going to go to the people on Zoom for a public comment. If you're wishing to speak, please raise your Zoom hand and let us know. You were wishing to speak, so you can come up to the mic, sorry.
My name's Henry Goldfine, and I live in the town of Washington. Before that, I lived out on Harris Hollow for over 43 years. I just wanted to answer the gentleman back there who seems to be concerned about if you're born here or if you graduated from high school here. I have 46 years here in this county by choice. And I think that my opinion is what happens in this county is just as great as anyone who happened to be born here. My family, my late wife, served on the very school board that he talks about. She served on the school board for eight years. So I think when we start talking about these things, we shouldn't start differentiating between who came here and who was born here. What I've always felt about this thing here is it's about money. It's always in Rappahannock County about money. And there are people here who are opposed to spending money on anything, just anything. And it has always, and I said this, I remember coming to a Monday night meeting and expressing myself, that in the long run, it always cost us more. If we don't do the broadband If we don't do the broadband now, and a couple of years from now, if we try to go it alone or something else, it's going to cost us more money instead of taking advantage of the government programs and of what private citizens are willing to help out and foundations and whatnot. It's a minimal amount of money in order to, you know, what the county's actual share is will be pretty minimal. And I've heard talk about people say, well, let's improve the, not the broadband, but the internet. And I look in the proposal, there's a $350,000 from schools will put up $350,000 to bring broadband in. I remember four years ago, when they wanted, well, it was when Dr. Green was the chair, was the head of the schools, they wanted to put a tower up at the school to bring better internet into the schools, and that was defeated, you know, because no one really wants to improve and see towers. And there were other reasons, like talk of maybe reasons like the tower would fall over on the kids and stuff like that. So every time we, you know, we try to save money, like the roof of the gymnasium, I thought that's another $60,000 we just put into the gymnasium. If it had been done right 14 years ago, we wouldn't have that problem. So the other thing is I always hear about, how does it benefit me? The talk here is always, how does it benefit me? And I hear, oh, if I want it underground, do I have to pay for it myself? You know, things like that. How does the entry into my house come? Do I have to pay for that myself? My point is that this is good for the county. And I think we all have to think about what is good for the county because we will not attract any businesses here if every contiguous county has broadband. They're going to go there. Why would they come here? So I really think this idea of trying to put pressure on these people just doesn't work. And afterwards, maybe privately, somebody can explain to me if any more information has been given out to the other six, seven, eight counties that have agreed to it. Have they gotten any more information than we, and why? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? It doesn't appear that we have anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak. Yes, sir. Oh, actually, sorry, we're not going around again. Anyone else that wishes to speak? All right, I'll close public comment period. At this point, we're at the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion that we adopt the consent agenda.
A motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. At this point, since Mr. Parrish is in the building, we will present him with his resolution.
I vote aye for Parrish.
Mr. Parrish? It's a resolution to commend the service of Christopher Parrish as vice chairman and member of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors, whereas the Honorable Christopher Parrish completed his public service to the citizens of Rappahannock County on December 31st, 2021, and whereas it is the position of this board that Mr. Parrish served this community with intelligence, understanding, compassion, and integrity during his 12 years on this board, serving as vice chairman for a number of those years. And whereas during his tenure on the board, he held appointments on a number of boards, committees, and commissions, including the Planning Commission, Broadband Authority, and Community Policy and Management Team, always representing Rappahannock County in the most favorable light. And whereas throughout his term on the board, Mr. Parrish was a tireless worker for his constituents in the Stonewall Hawthorne District while also being dedicated to the quality of life for all county residents, and whereas Mr. Parrish served with quiet integrity and with the best interests of the citizens always at heart, always trying to forge consensus. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors extend their sincerest gratitude to the honorable I, Christopher Parrish, and wish him all of the best in his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors so all citizens may reflect upon the service and accomplishments of this dedicated public servant. Thank you so very much for your service. Now, Mr. Parrish, I don't know if you remember or not, when we talked about what your gift should be, I asked you if you wanted a chair like we had given Mr. Welch. Do you recall that conversation?
I'd rather have a Rolex. Oh, wow.
What was the answer he gave?
No, he said a dump truck. A dump truck.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, after the Rolex, a dump truck.
He has the budget of Rappahannock County. Jason Goldman, a local woodworker, very creative craftsman, had this gate, and the back gate has your plaque on it.
Oh, wow.
And your farm.
I'm touched.
And your farm name on the door.
Yeah, I see that. That's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Be careful, I don't think anything will fall off.
Yeah, yeah, I forgot.
Don't want to lose your hay belt.
Don't sell that acre, it's keeping.
Put it to the box that was with it.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for the very generous description of this resolution here. I'm not sure I deserve all of that. And as most of you all know, I ran for this position with the, under the encouragement of John McCarthy, who was the county administrator at the time. He, in my opinion, did more than any single individual for making this county what it is today, along with the help of Peter Luke, who was the county attorney for 30 years. And so I'm really honored to have the opportunity to serve the county for these last 12 years. I thoroughly enjoyed working with my fellow board members, every one of them, and I learned a lot from each one of them, especially that human nature. And I thank you all for tolerating me all this time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Chris.
That's awesome. It's a good little thing about how durable it is. Let's not find out how durable it is.
Yeah, but he has grandkids or great-grandkids that might be an issue. Next, we're into appointments.
Mr. Curry, how often does the Board of Building Appeals meet?
Has not met in the four years I've been here.
Seems like we can wait for more applications. I think we should table this.
We tabled it.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, agriculture and forestal, have you heard anything?
Have not received any interest for the Agriculture and Forestals District Advisory Committee.
Water Resources Protection and Monitoring. Vincent Day was not available for this month. I am hopeful, and I believe they will be attending next month to discuss the water issues, concerns that we have. Town boundary line change request. Mr. Whitson, I think you should take.
Sure. I'd like to try to work with my colleagues to move this along. We've been talking about it for a long time. Just if you would bear with me just for a minute, I've been thinking about this a lot, and I think I've got a reasonable logic that should move us forward. First of all, I think everyone in Rappahannock County values property rights above all other things. This is a private property owner who has asked the town of Washington to approach us about possibly adjusting the town boundary to encompass more or less four acres on the corner of 211 and Warren Avenue, which he owns as a private citizen. And with that request now in our hands, I think it is our job and responsibility to act on that request one way or the other. And whether we agree to the boundary line adjustment or not remains to be seen. But I just thought I would provide some of my own input to help move the discussion forward, and then I'm going to put forward a motion, and we'll see where we end up. In addition to the property owner's private property rights, I should note that the portion of the parcel, again, we're talking about four acres that currently is outside the town in Rappahannock County, is zone commercial general. And if you look at Section 170-36 of the Rappahannock County zoning ordinance, you will note that while the property owner owning a parcel or a portion of a parcel that is zone commercial general has many and virtually unlimited byright uses of that property, given its current zoning from a county zoning perspective, the one area among some that is not a byright use is residential dwelling units. Residential dwelling units on a commercial general property require a special use permit under a county zoning ordinance, which would involve both the county planning commission and, under our current system, the Board of Zoning Appeals. Recognizing that an agreement to adjust the boundary line would essentially cede control of that portion of the property that's currently subject to the county zoning ordinance, at least from my perspective, the only way that I will support a boundary line adjustment agreement in some form is if such an agreement, and I would ask Mr. Goff or Mr. Curry to take note, if such an agreement would, in some way, however it's worded, not allow for the construction of residential dwelling permits on that parcel on the corner that's in question, is subject to the current pending agreement or the agreement that's been put forward for our consideration. That's the first thing. So I would only support the agreement if there are no residential dwelling units placed on that parcel. Second, there's been a lot of discussion in the public about our request for concessions from the town. I just want to be clear on this point. This was not something that originated with me or anyone out on the board. Early on last year, the property owner and his attorney spoke to our board, I believe it was in January of 2021, and suggested to us that certain concessions or agreements could be reached as part of this type of agreement. And so that started at least me thinking about what could be exchanged in the mutual interest of both parties, the town and the county. Subsequent to that discussion before our board, there was a draft agreement sent to us, and in there, there are a collection of what I would characterize as minor concessions that the lawyer for the property owner characterized as a removal of covenants on certain properties in the town. So I would ask that any draft agreement that we consider as a board include all of those offered concessions. And in addition, I would ask that the town find some workaround vis-à-vis their bondholder on their wastewater treatment system to extend to Company One Volunteer Fire and Rescue in Washington at least the option for connecting to the wastewater treatment system. And I think that that's an important public safety hope that we can't lose track of here. A couple of other things that I would ask be included in any agreement for, draft agreement for our board's consideration. I would ask for sufficient screening along 211. This is a relatively intense development that regardless of what is ultimately placed there, should be screened in some form, and those details certainly can be worked out if we decide to enter into an agreement. I would also ask that accommodations be made to protect our dark skies on that intersection. The county park is across 211. It's a dark skies, International Dark Skies Park, and so any development on that corner potentially threatens that designation. Finally, I would ask that, as part of any agreement for consideration, that the property owner be requested to present at least some specificity with regard to what ultimately will be constructed on the parcel, and that the property owner be bound by that agreement. I think we've already heard that the property owner, and thank you to Mr. Goff for his guidance in this regard, had agreed to be a party to any agreement between the town and the county. So hopefully, that's not an area of controversy. So I just wanted to put those items out there again. I would be inclined to support the request for a boundary line adjustment, but only if included in such an agreement or the items I've just described. And with that, I will put forward a motion that our chair schedule at a date and time certain, a work session to include the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors with an invitation to the property owner to answer any questions about what I hope will be a more robust draft agreement that would include everything I've just described. And if we all have our calendars, we could set that time now, or we could set it separate from this meeting.
You do also have several budget work sessions over the next couple of weeks.
Okay, that's a good idea.
To one of those that's already overdone.
What are the dates of those budget work sessions?
Could I interject a question? You said a joint work session with the property owner, but...
No, I didn't say a joint work session. I said a work session with the board.
Well, all right, I didn't mean to say, but we really need a joint work session, I think, with the town because the agreement is with the town and the county and not just the county and the property owner.
Yeah, I see your point. I feel better about, at least initially, meeting as a board, as Board of Supervisors, and invite the property owner to answer any questions we have so that we could put forward to the town what we think looks like a satisfactory draft agreement that includes our interests. I think it would be better to do it sequentially, in my view, so that we can at least stick to our county interest initially.
I'm just concerned that leaving this completely in the hands of the town later on, we could have a debacle like we have at the post office.
Right, and I think that my goal, and hopefully I've articulated it here to some extent, to a lengthy extent, is that whatever draft agreement we're comfortable putting forward for the town's consideration will protect the interests of county residents who don't reside in the town. And I think that's, in fact, why it would, in my mind, make sense to have a work session of this board with the property owner, and then we move forward from there. I wouldn't be comfortable putting forward an agreement that gave any wiggle room to the town outside of what we were requiring in the agreement. And I think either way, both the town and the Board of Supervisors will have to have public hearings if we ever reach a point where we...
They're required, yeah.
Yeah, where we sign a final agreement.
But the town has their public hearings in a place that's not accessible to the public, mostly the public.
Mr. Whitson, I think Mr. Goff does.
I was trying to make sure I understood. You said no residential dwellings on the parcel that is now zone county commercial general.
On the parcel as a whole.
Even what is now, pardon the project that's inside the town.
Right, right, on the parcel, whatever it is, whatever the tax map number is.
The Phase Two section.
Yeah, my point is that we would be ceding control of four acres of whatever the total acreage of the parcel is, and once the entire parcel's in the town, I would not support any more residential dwelling units on that parcel, parcel, referring to the tax map number. Okay, so that assumes the whole parcel then is within the town. Other questions? And just to be clear, the Rush River Commons portion of the ongoing project, which is entirely within the town of Washington, already has within it, and this has been approved, 18 residential dwelling units, I believe, is the number. approved, 18 residential dwelling units, I believe, is the number. And in our last census data, I should add, Rappahannock County lost approximately 18 residential dwelling units. And so that's another reason why, at least from my position, I don't think increased residential density on that corner makes sense.
All right. So we have a motion. We've got the dates up on the board where we're meeting for the budget. And I know you've got it.
Yeah. And just to be clear, I'd like to state for the record that my brothers and I own a business that's on Eldon Farm. We crafted a lease with the previous owners, Lane Industries. And when Mr. Ockery bought that, he inherited our lease. That in no way means that I can't talk about it. And it does not preclude me from voting or making decisions regarding the Rush River Commons project or the, the boundary line adjustment, I should say. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Are there any other conflicts on these dates with other board member meetings? I don't think I do. But Mr. Carney, I think you had one day, the 14th, maybe, where you had a, no?
So the 21st is the river basin.
Yeah, 21st, okay.
I just feel like, I, I have to say, I was looking at our comprehensive plan earlier today. And one of our principles is that manners of planning and zoning and those sorts of items that are vital to the public interest should be scheduled so as to invite the, the most possible amount of public interaction and feedback possible. It troubles me that this has only ever occurred, a discussion on this item, at the 2:00 PM meetings. We've never had this on a 7:00 PM meeting. I think in order to get the most amount of feedback on this item, we need to start scheduling this for evening meetings, for folks that work, folks that have kids in school. This timing simply doesn't work. And I would really encourage all of us to pump the brakes and do the public meeting first, so that we know how people really feel about this before we set down the road for a solution, and then craft a solution that doesn't fit.
So logistically, what are you, what do you want to do?
Well, my other point would be that last time we met, we talked about what our priorities are, and not a single one of us mentioned this.
I'm not making it a priority. I think it's, I think we, it's been, it's been on our agenda, I don't know how many months in a row. And I think it's frankly disrespectful to it, to not address it. And I'm not going to keep kicking the can down the road. And wherever we end up on the agreement, we end up on it. But I'd like to just move along and, and be done talking about it.
I would agree with you if we had gotten answers to our initial questions. But one of our initial questions was, please reference the documents that preclude you from providing water to addresses outside of the town. We still have not seen those documents. We asked for maps, and we got some concept drawings. I, I feel like we haven't gotten straight answers, but we're expected to give an answer. And I think that's a huge problem. And I don't understand how we are expected to make a decision or even set down a path until we have ample public feedback, because there is a lot of public interest in this topic.
So part of my concern was also not having all the information. And that's why I was willing to have a, a meeting that we would all be able to attend and sit down with the landowner to get the information that we have questions for out and clear. And then I do like the idea of adding it to an evening meeting after that. But I don't, having conversations like this or, or one person just showing up to talk to us, I don't think is, does it much justice. I'd like to get the plans on the table, have everybody in the room, and just ask the questions that we don't know the answers to that concern us.
I think that's great, Madam Chairman, but that begs the question, if that was the plan, why don't we have it scheduled for tonight?
We can do it next month.
Yeah, I mean, there was a budget meeting that's in the evening.
Or schedule a work session at one of our budget meetings, and then we can add it as an agenda item for further public discussion. It doesn't have to necessarily be a public hearing, because I don't think by our next meeting, we'll be ready with any kind of final agreement that we might sign. So, Madam Chair, why don't, why don't you pick one of our upcoming budget work sessions, and we'll see if the property owner is available. And then we can add it to our evening 7:00 PM meeting or session for April 4th, I think, is that first Monday. And I think that that would be a reasonable timeline on which to proceed, and at least we're moving forward. So I don't, I don't know if we could do it as early as this Wednesday, if it's too late to add that. I don't think there's any action coming out of it. So it would just be a discussion item. Mr. Curry could guide us in that regard. March 14th, March 21st, doesn't matter to me. Let's get it on there and, and see if we can get the landowner here.
I think there's always a lot to digest, especially with the budget launch meeting. That is a lot of information. I don't think that's a good meeting to piggyback on. Those daytime meetings are very busy times for folks that work during the day, and I don't think we should undertake it during those meetings. I don't mean to be disagreeable, but I really believe that evening meeting of the regularly scheduled April Board of Supervisors meeting should be the earliest that we take up this business.
I think maybe we could schedule with three days' notice, evening work session, 7:00 PM, pick a date separate and apart from our budget meetings, and then we satisfy Ms. Smith, it seems like. So maybe, I don't know what, what nights would make sense. So we've got Wednesday, March 9th, and Monday, the 14th, and Monday, the 21st for budget work sessions. So maybe an in-between date sometime in March. And then we'll schedule for 7:00 PM and see if the property owner could be available on that date at 7:00 PM for a standalone work session. And Ms. Smith, your point's well taken, so hopefully that resolves it.
If it's so urgent, why aren't we doing it this evening?
Because we're talking about it right now. And I don't think that's...
But the chairman sets the agenda. It could have been scheduled for tonight. We have a canceled meeting for this evening. And yet we're being scheduled, pressured to schedule a special meeting to do something we could have done this evening.
Madam Chair, I'm ready to work. So if you want to pick a date in March, let's do that. And if, if, hopefully we can all make our schedule work.
Mr. Fraser, I do know nights are...
That's, that's not an issue right now. But I just wondered if, if some of those, I mean, we've got 1 o'clock meetings. Obviously, we want to have some daytime meetings because of, you know, the constitutional officers, you know, to talk about their budgets. But I, I don't know. I'm with Ms. Smith. I think that a, a, a project of this magnitude, we have had boundary adjustments over time, but nothing this aggressive. It's only like an occasional lot where the, the property owner either wanted all in the county or all in the town, and they were accommodated. But this is completely different. This is large-scale building. And I'm afraid that if we don't do it right, we could wind up with a fiasco like the post office, where two-thirds of the people that actually use the, the Washington zip code for their address can't go up there after dark and get mail because there's no lights there. And there's not, not great difficulty in putting up down shielded lights to protect the patrons and the employees, for that matter. I mean, we have, we have lights in Amosville.
I would like to have a conversation with the board and the, the landowner to clear up questions. I don't know if we can have a Wednesday evening meeting, March 16th.
I have a meeting on the Ides of March. And then I think that, that Friday is Association.
A Tuesday.
I do like to have dinner with my family occasionally.
If they want to come to the...
You certainly...
Absolutely not.
Just like today, you have a day session, for your regular board meetings, you have day session, evening session. My recollection of your 1:00 PM budget work sessions is that they usually run for, you know, two or three hours. So wouldn't be unreasonable to have a 1:00 PM and a 7:00 PM on the same day if one of those dates works. You have that scheduled for the 14th.
How about the 21st?
You have a broadband authority meeting at 5:30. So you could do it after that broadband.
Would that make sense?
Then nobody's going to come talk to us at that moment, most likely.
Well, we don't know what, what dates the landowner's even available. So why are we looking at dates until we know what their schedule is?
I would like to offer them a date. They've written me several letters, and now it's time I need to reply to them.
Well, if they give you their dates, then you can Google poll us, and then we can set a date.
Three days' notice, I think.
Yep. Yeah, if that works for everybody else, I'll be happy to do that.
Well, that was fun. Okay.
All right. So we'll shoot for an evening meeting after one of our other meetings.
You have a motion for a work session with the owner. I don't know that I heard a second.
I don't think we ever got to a second.
I'll second. Thank you.
I don't think it's necessary.
I mean, if we're gonna, I'll, I'll withdraw the motion.
Everything that's in the motion, the chair's already allowed to do.
If you're okay with it, Mr. Whitson, I'll just go ahead and...
Thank you.
...ask for dates.
Can't win for losing sometimes.
So what, do we have a motion or a withdrawal?
They'll withdraw.
Withdraw. And she's just going to schedule with three days' notice.
I'm gonna, I'll find some dates from the landowner. I'll send out a doodle poll like we've done in the past, and we'll figure out a date.
Sounds good.
Next is the Building Committee requested direction.
Madam Chair, perhaps I'll start off that. We had the joint meeting between the Building Committee and the Board of Supervisors, and we talked about a great deal of different projects that, that we're looking at and working on. But we, we left with the sense that we didn't really have a consensus from the board, and we weren't really looking for one at that meeting, because it was such a lot of information to, to go through and digest.
Mr. Eric. Thank you.
We can't hear you.
Oh, you can't hear us?
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, anyway, our, our committee would like to have a consensus of the board now as to exactly what projects you feel we should be working on and in what direction. And namely, those are, we, we thought we had a consensus that the jail is the priority, that we start working on that and getting, you know, plans together and maybe hit something on the street for bids, requests for proposal. But we really don't have a general feeling on what the board wants us to do with a new project. And that is, you may have to go back and look at the different artist's rendering of that. But do we want a courthouse campus that is just a courthouse over here in a new building? How do we want it oriented? Things of that nature. And of course, we still need to go through it and maybe look at the needs of each one of the stakeholders in there, namely, the, the different clerks of court, the Commonwealth Attorney, not to mention the courtroom itself. But I think the judges, the different judges that were approached and interviewed, they really don't want any peculiarities or specialty things. They understand that we're kind of unique out here, and it's kind of, kind of bland for them, I'm sure, when you compare it to Loudoun County. And anyway, we just, we just need a consensus from this board in a direction, more than a consensus, I think, we really need a vote of this board, how we're supposed to be maneuvering.
They're great questions, I think. I mean, what I took away from that meeting is the Sheriff's Department and the chimneys and...
Right.
The roof. I do, I mean, that sounds, sounds like you all on the Building Committee agree that that's a priority. I think we got to start there.
Well, the third, I think Dale Waters, and I'm not sure who other the committee members were, but Mr. Curry was there as well. And several contractors went up in the attic, and Mr. Curry was there. I missed that day. I think they have a pretty good idea of what they can work on and get accomplished on our behalf. But still, it's, it's bid work, unless for some reason we find a way to sole source it, which probably more trouble than it's worth. So we have a, a general direction on that, I think. But we're at the courthouse, the new courthouse. I think everybody generally agreed that Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors wants to keep court functions here. We don't even know if one of the other counties like Falkir would even entertain us doing all our court work down there to start with. So...
So are you asking for a vote on, on whether or not to jump in on the Sheriff's Department complex, for starters? Is that, you want to disaggregate this, these questions and address them one by one, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I...
That makes sense.
Yeah, I, I'll put forward a motion that we, we directly, I, I guess it would be the county administrator in this case to, and you correct me if this is incorrect, or I'm not covering anything, solicit bids on the, the repairs and upgrades discussed in our joint meeting, recently in our joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors and the Building Committee, and, and set that as a top priority.
He, he certainly can do that, but he doesn't have the necessary paperwork right now. But I mean, we're, we're compiling stuff, putting it together.
So they would, everything between where we are and bidding would be the direction of the board, which would include design, et cetera. That's fine.
Yeah, I just, I mean...
For the courthouse, we're just gonna fix it up, right? There's no new design or anything. It's...
On this?
Take care of the outside.
Well, this, this is basically an envelope project right now.
Yep.
And, and then we really won't do much with that if we're looking at doing anything else, because one of the, one of the artists' renderings from, from Wiley Wilson is an addition on the back of these buildings. If we're not going to do that, then we can go ahead with the envelope. But if we're going to go with some sort of an addition on the back, then it doesn't make much sense to do an addition after we've done some restoration work.
Right.
I can say that I thought that the presentation you all gave was incredible. And I think that I learned a lot by, from that presentation. And I think that I have heard most people say that they want the court to remain here, which I fully agree with, and I want to protect our old buildings. And the suggestion that you all had, which was to start with that jail sort of complex and move forward, would be a good idea. I had a question, was Mr. Waters interested in sort of being part of the process all the way through? He has so much experience doing preservation.
He's stuck there, yeah. He's involved. I don't think he will be a contractor of any kind.
No, no, no.
He's fully engaged. And as Mr. Fraser said, he was out with a group of contractors that he knows and toured all the buildings, including inside the jail. One of those contractors returned a couple of days later with his drone to fly the roof and the chimneys, the jail and this building, to know really what they're getting into. All needed to get into detailed design to bid something else.
Yeah.
And that's a necessary step in all this project.
Is that a second? I'll second.
On the sheriff's.
Yeah, that, that building actually got left completely off of a lot of, a lot of the crawling around by the engineers. And if you don't have engineers to crawl around, look at things, then the contractors are, they're faced with a dilemma. They either bid it and lose, or they bid it very big and may not have to do the work to days, you know, gambled on. And so Dale and Paige, Lenny, took on the, the role of crawling around in that building and finding out things that we normally would have paid pretty good money for.
That's incredible.
So if I understand, Mr. Whitson, what you're saying is the motion would be for number one, which is to move forward with the jail repair and restoration.
Yeah, and I think, Mr. Carney, second ahead. You got Building Committee members. You're still the Building Committee, right?
Yes.
So you've already, I think, four.
So we have a motion and a second. Do you have the motion? Do we need to reset?
Yes.
Okay.
The county administrator solicited bids for the jail, obviously after we do all the proper design and bid package and all that, which would be left to the Building Committee to pull together.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
The second item, does the courthouse complex meet the essential need for the people of Rappahannock County? And with planning for its restoration in future, new construction in the town of Washington continue to be a focus of the Building Committee? So I think we want this envelope to be, you know, secured, which would be the, the brick, the windows, the eve. But are we looking, again, at either a separate complex for a new courthouse, or do we look at the addition possibly on the back of here? My recommendation is a new building, because that, that is pretty much a cut and dry bid. The only thing that changes prices there is the, the site. We already own the site. We know pretty much what, what's going to happen there, unless there's a big rock outcropping underneath the soil. And it really doesn't indicate that that could happen. Could, doesn't seem that likely.
Well, we would certainly know that before we went to bid.
Right.
Well, my fear is that if we did a bump out on this building or added to this building is that it wouldn't suffice 10, 20 years down the road. And to agree with you, if we did something separate, standalone, it could. And I think when you start opening up old buildings, as Mr. Waters suggested...
It's never ending.
And the cost can...
And then we're right back to what they talked about at the library. Once we open this, it could, it could impact having court functions here. So... So I guess until the judges say different, we can continue having court here during construction of a new facility. But I don't see how you can incorporate all the safety measures that would be required in an old building and not completely alter the characteristics of it.
Yeah, and I might be alone on this, but in the spirit of not building a bunch of new stuff, I was just hoping that we could at least hold off on some firm decision, building a new building, and think about somehow using at least this plus something on the back. And then, in the interim period, do the work on the outside to just keep this building and the other ones on courthouse row intact. But I, I mean, I've thought about it, and I just, I just don't, I can't get excited about building a brand-new building, but I totally understand your logic, logical explanation.
Yeah, I'm not excited about it either, but the problem is trying to retrofit. I've worked in the Prince William County courthouse complex when we were putting in the holding cells. And when you start retrofitting, and that building wasn't old like this one, because their old building is around the corner, you can see it, and it's just kind of shored up, hoping that, you know, it was maintained at the time. But, you know, you're taking a building that dates back nearly 200 years and trying to bring it up to new safety standards. The judge has to come up those stairs, the prosecutor has to come up the stairs, the defense attorneys have to come up the stairs, the jury, the witnesses. Everybody's coming up the same set of stairs, and then they're all downstairs together, too. There's just no separation. And people aren't as friendly as they used to be.
Is there, I guess, is there a way that we can, well, backing up for a minute, is it too much to manage all at once if we get the Sheriff's Department work underway and then do this, I don't know how you pronounce it here, envelope preservation work underway, with the question that's still hanging out there about what ultimately the configuration of the courthouse or new building might be? I mean, is there some, can we do, start on the Sheriff's Department and concurrently start on other work on these other buildings?
I think you probably could do it one right after the other type of thing because you've got, you're probably going to have to scaffold a lot of that building over there, you could then move that scaffold over here. But to have them both scaffold at the same time, you'd have two hard hat zones you're trying to maintain.
I think you largely have two totally different tracks working where you'll have trades actually physically touching these buildings, and you'll be in a design process for some new building. So totally separated and different paths. You have Wiley Wilson on contract right now to drive through these various concept plans to help drive towards a concept plan. And so the Building Committee's looked at, I think, seven different versions of that so far, brought you three of them that they kind of thought bracketed the perspective of everything that Wiley Wilson came up with now. And before they keep moving forward with the Wiley Wilson contract, I think they need some better understanding of what the rest of the board thinks makes sense relative to that job that you've already bought for the concept design. And they don't want to be working aimlessly, trying to guess what the rest of the board wants relative to all these concepts, where should they start focusing their attention on these concepts? Should they pause the concepts? Or, so it's just two members out of five, and they, you know, they want a little bit of support from, I think, their peers to know, are they on the right track? If I can paraphrase.
Well, and I think, too, you know, it's important to frame these questions. And they do seem like some very heavy questions when you look at them all at once, but it won't all happen at once. And the purpose of the Building Committee is to plan for the future. And a big part of the reason that we're having these discussions about the courthouse is because we don't want to be caught off guard and be told what to do. We want to know what we've planned and be able to make a choice of what to do, and know it's a good choice, and that no judge is going to come in and second-guess us. And, you know, hopefully, things will level out one day in the not-too-distant future, and we'll be able to entertain, you know, some building ideas. I think it is prohibitive right now to undertake a brand-new building, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't plan for when we have the opportunity to do that. And we will be paying off some bonds in the next few years. So we will be in a good financial position to make some decisions. And when all of those stars align, I think doing the work now to position us for those future decisions is incredibly advantageous. And so that's where we're at. It's not we're asking you to make a final decision on this, it's just as we're making, planning choices, we want to make sure we're on the right track. And I guess having worked through the comp plan and, you know, knowing that, you know, this one thinks we should be doing this, and this one thinks, you know, but we really need a consensus that this is where we should be heading so that we're not wasting time planning something we all ultimately don't want.
And if you're going to have all the workers on the property doing the envelope, if we know all the buildings that are not going to get torn down or changed in some massive way, they can work on the envelope of all the other buildings while they're here, which I think is probably what you're looking for as well. And then we've just got to determine what happens with the courthouse. So Wiley Wilson, to move forward, just needs to know that we're all in agreement, if we are, that all the buildings that are going to stay in this campus need to be brought up to speed on the envelope, and then we can go inside after that work is... Is that kind of the direction Wiley needs?
It's going to take quite a little bit longer for them. Even if we said that we want a building of certain square footage and certain amount of, you know, certain type of appearance architecturally, they've got to work on the systems. So it's going to, it would take a while to have drawings on the street.
You haven't bought that yet.
I know.
That detailed design. You have to get through a conceptual planning first.
Right, it takes a while to get there. So if we're going to save the outside of these buildings, which will save the buildings, then we could move scaffolding from one to the other, and that would, that would save time and money in the long run. But again, if we're talking about knocking that wall out or part of that wall out to get over there...
Just in fixing it.
Yeah, it kind of...
Well, in terms of a larger discussion about the campus concept, which I really like, and I really like keeping everything here in Little Washington, which I think will have the added benefit of enlivening the town a little bit more, I do think getting everything on a actual county campus is a good idea. Not town and county, but if we can do something like that, we can...
Like a boundary adjustment to put that four acres into county?
You know, if we can have a discussion where we can, it would make the project, and I feel like it would make the campus, more cohesive. And I think it's worth talking about. And Mr. Fraser, you brought it up, and I think it just makes sense in terms of projects. I mean, hey, if we're going to, you know, if that's something that people want to do and want to build this building, and we want to, you know, pump life into the administrative center down here, I think it makes sense to just at least definitely just talk about.
Well, this building could be repurposed and maybe the clerk's office, you know, because we're going to have to have some space to move. The other constitutional officers, as we work in the clerks, I mean, the treasurer and commissioner of revenue, those buildings need work. So you may be using the old clerk's office to float another one in and out of while you refurbish a previous one, that type of thing. So, but this building here could be repurposed for the county admin, and this could be the board meeting room. And then we don't run afoul of anyone saying that the board shouldn't be, and the planning commission shouldn't be, and the BZA, et cetera, shouldn't be meeting in the same space that's used for court. We would be out of that. We would be here, the court would be over there, and the court would be protected and properly locked up and supervised by the sheriff's office. And then a lot of that heartburn goes away by everybody concerned. So these buildings wouldn't be unused, that's not our, that's not in our foreseeable future that these buildings would sit. We have...
And we'd get out some of the rental spaces, you know, that we continue to spend money on every month.
Yeah, we've spent...
What do you need for us to move forward? We've done one. It sounds like everybody wants to stay in the campus, so for Wiley Wilson's design and that kind of thing, they know that's the goal. And then if it makes sense to have other buildings planned for the envelope work right after the jail, I think that's...
This would be it. This would be it, because this one is in probably not as bad a shape, but it looks bad. And it is in good shape. So we could move from there to this.
And is that something that they would put together for, so plan, draft of start at the jail, go to here, go to here?
Well, we're not, I don't know to what involvement Wiley Wilson would have in the jail restoration and this building, they would have some, obviously, they've done some initial work on this one. So it's really, I don't think, that much more work for them to get started on getting this done. The big project that we're looking at is, do we add on or are we standalone? And then we can, we can either put the design part of it on hold for a while, move forward a little bit later. If we're going to, if we're going to move the scaffolding, like, from that building to this building, then it would make sense that we're not going to be knocking out those back walls and put an addition on it.
Maybe the useful input would be, can you work towards the bracketing of what this comp, the campus complex would be? And then would that range from this building, basically in the form it is today, with another building, and this building with a big expansion on the back? And have Wiley Wilson focus on those two scenarios and build out whatever concepts are needed so that then that A, B choice can be made by the board at a later time based on cost and disruption and all those other things? This is all concept level that Wiley Wilson's doing now.
Right. I don't think it would be, you know, a stretch of the imagination to believe that we could all in the very near future just pick a place and drive and look at some of the, Mr. Curry has sent us some emails about different counties that have had the same problems, and just take a look at how they integrated their historic buildings with an addition or new buildings, and just see if we like that concept. Because, you know, right now, we're sitting around talking about something that, we're trying to vaguely remember what, what was the last time we saw something like that?
Sure.
I guess, I guess the question, you gave me pause a little bit because you said that in order to do the envelope restoration, for example, on this building, if we're going to add to the back, then maybe that wouldn't be a good thing to do? And so I want, I don't want to be irresponsible and forego kind of envelope protection renovation just because we haven't made a decision about the larger question of a new building or expanding this one.
Well, this type of construction, for instance, is a Flemish bond brick, it's a several bricks, and it's thick. And that is the structure of the building. And when you start going, you know, making cuts in it, you're actually, you're actually working, removing part of the structural integrity. Of course, it can be shored up with different types of materials, steel beams and concrete lentils and things of that nature. But nobody has been in those walls, and we haven't penetrated them to see exactly what that would involve. But that's what you do, when you start cutting into that existing wall, you could be, what's the word I'm looking for? You could be compromising the integrity, and that would, that would right there put an end to the whole project.
Right.
Everything is based on the structural integrity of those 200, nearly 200-year-old bricks.
So what can we do today that would move forward the project on other buildings besides the Sheriff's Department, if anything? That's where, I think, we're sitting right now.
I think the process would be sheriff's office, this building on envelope. There are minor things we could work on, like the commissioner, I mean, the county attorney's building over there, the attorney building. But those are minor in comparison to what needs to be done to this building.
Okay, so, so you're saying that we could put money into this building, and if, if sometime later we decide to add on to the back, then it would not be a misuse of dollars to work on? I mean, this building's going to be either used in a different form or repurposed, right? So, so you're saying that our next step, we can go ahead and make a decision that they scaffold this and work on it and fix it up on the outside?
I'd like to see that, but if the, again, if the purpose is to knock out, you know, knock holes in that back wall, then it might disrupt some of the work that we've already done. The board would have to acknowledge that that could happen.
My guess is the amount of time it's going to take to do the jail gives us a lot of time to pontificate about the, I mean, tell me if I'm wrong.
That's not the goal.
We know we want to do the envelopes, this is the questionable building, and I think we move forward with Wiley, with whomever, and say we want to do all the buildings. And then that this one is the questionable one, they'll be able to give us a quote with or without.
So it sounds like these were questions that we pieced together at the Building Committee meeting that I came up with the final form for and put to paper. So it sounds like we have an answer of yes to number one, and it sounds like we have an answer of yes to number three, that we should be working on the building's envelopes and scheduling that work as best we can to accommodate any economies of scale in terms of the tasks. And then it sounds like, what I'm hearing, and this was the most critical question to me because it's the biggest question, is on question number two, we're thinking about it. I don't have, I don't feel like I have clear guidance on question number two.
I think I hear you saying that.
So...
So to not belabor, what information does the board need to help answer number two? Or is it just time?
Well, your point, Wiley Wilson doing a concept A and concept B with it attached and one apart that we could look at could help us answer this question, if we want to answer it. I mean, I agree, you have to make a decision at some point, hey, what do we want to do? And that's a really good question to answer, sooner than later, I feel.
And we already have a few sketches, or do we have something exactly that fits that, Mr. Curry?
We have one with an addition on here, but it wasn't for full court. So I think that would be a whole new concept, and it's complicated.
Right.
Because utilities and a lot of different things, but not impossible.
How long does it take them typically to turn them?
These are a week.
Oh, wow.
But they're low-level concept plans without taking into account a lot of the really fine details that would have to be worked out later.
I would just say, food for thought for everyone, if you are putting an addition on this building, where are you going to put folks coming out of the rental space? Where are you going to put county administration? Because if you're not building a new courthouse building, you're going to need somewhere for county administration to go, if you're truly fostering a campus concept. And so think about when you move the pieces around, where does everybody end up? And I personally, I would never want this building to fall into, not be used. I'd always want it to be a vibrant building, it's got a rich history. I got my driver's license in this building. My older son got his driver's license in this building. And Lord willing, within the next six months or so, my younger son will get his driver's license in this building.
For the record, I've only been one speeding ticket.
Right there with you, Mr. Fraser.
So, you know, I have some very sentimental attachments to this building, and I would want it to have a vibrant future. And I think that it can be repurposed very well. And I would hate for it to lose its character and charm by being retrofitted for a modern courthouse that is perhaps not a wise fit.
There's the cost difference between building new and attaching to an old, which I know a lot about. So if we were even considering attaching to, I'd like to be able to see what the difference is to try to make something work versus build new that fits in.
I think we would wind up with more square footage per, for the dollar value with a new. I just remember Madison, I was involved in that a little bit. A friend of mine bid the electrical through a general contractor. They were under court order, I believe, to do something, either expand or build a new. So they came up with the plan of an addition onto their existing courthouse, and the architect firm that they selected told them to prepare for $6 million. So they put the bids out on the street, an addition plus a remodel of the existing courthouse, and the lowest bid came in at $8,900, and I'll just make up a number after that. They were 50% over budget. They had, you know...
And in today's world, that could happen really quickly.
Yeah.
So what do we need to do?
I'm thinking, why don't we move forward with one and two, or one and three, and table or come back to two? and table or come back to two?
Well, that helps us direct our work as the Building Committee. And should we take direction on number two and ask Wiley Wilson to draft an alternative for both scenarios?
Yeah, and I mean, he can ballpark though, but I guess he could actually give us a ballpark to help, help us with that question is.
Cost benefit analysis, very basic. I mean, I could be swayed, I just.
We're not, we're not the only ones that have been at this place.
Oh, sure.
So they, they, I'm sure he's got experience with it.
Yeah.
And I like the road trip I do.
So what, what additional motions do we need to put forward here?
I think we do.
I, I don't think right now we do need one.
Okay, but the Sheriff's Department, that's done, so.
Correct. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we'll move forward.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for your efforts. Agriculture by right review. Ms. Smith, I think this one's yours.
Well, I did ask for this to be added. And I thought that there were some items that, that we had asked for the County Attorney to review with us as a holdover from last month.
I went to Mr. Curry's office and we dug out my memo. I can't remember when it was dated. That was, I was hoping that that would be included in today's papers.
Well, I distributed that memo to the board again. And you noted in that legal memorandum that you felt that perhaps it shouldn't be floating out in the wild because you're making findings of law and fact that perhaps.
At that time were pertinent to one potential, this is a litigation we're facing.
So each of the board members has received that recently?
Everybody's gotten this, okay. So I think this one goes over pretty much everything. And I can certainly focus in on any kind of specific question that anyone has and draft another memorandum. I don't think we're facing any kind of threat of litigation at this point that would prevent me from going into a certain set of facts. So I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I'm grateful Ms. Smith added this. I, I think for me, the, the logical next step, we know, we know what the Code of Virginia states regarding agritourism and farm wineries and customary, and what is it customary?
Usual and customary.
Usual and customary uses thereof. To me, the big question is, what can we do from a local ordinance perspective, recognizing that a legislative change at the state level is not gonna happen overnight or potentially ever, given how wide open the farm winery provisions and the agritourism provisions are? And the increase in, I would say, non-bonified agricultural activities we're seeing attached to certain of these properties in our county? I would be really interested to know, what can we do from a local ordinance perspective to give our ordinance more teeth vis a vis purported customary and usual uses that are, by any red face test, not bona fide agricultural or related uses?
If that's, it's kind of hard to envision how you're gonna legislate what's customary and usual. I guess there, you could attempt to do so. And you could also, I think, focus more on the second exception. And that is to help safety and general welfare. Because what one of the major issues has been is access ingress degress.
Yeah.
And so I think that the ordinance may be capable of being, too thie for lack of a better phrase, by trying, I mean, we can give it a stab and see what you think as far as what is defining customary and usual and attempted. But I'd like to be able to do that in conjunction, maybe with, with our VACOR partners too, before we start to.
Yeah, and, and it seems, it seems that other localities have wrestled with or are now wrestling with a proliferation of farm wineries and agritourism-type businesses. And then those same businesses, in some cases, like we've experienced here in Rappahannock County, really by any measure overstepping what is usual and customary. And, and if that, if I'm correct, that other localities are struggling, struggling with this, and having talked with our local ABC agent, it seems that they are. I would like to know what we can do within our local ordinance to give us some protection. And maybe you're right, maybe it's public safety, transportation-related stuff. It doesn't matter to me, but I just feel like we're exposed in this regard.
One thing to remember is the General Assembly made the decision that it's the policy of the Commonwealth to encourage this type of agricultural activity. And so you're sort of fighting City Hall when you're wanting to maybe hone in on providing a definition to a state code requirement of usual and customary? To hone in on that and try to define it at a local level, maybe in and of itself be problematic legally. But I'm not saying it shouldn't be done or shouldn't be tried. I'm just saying that, that I just think there's gonna be maybe a limited utility to that. Because what, what you're doing is when you put that definition on the books, then you're asking staff to enforce it. And that's also, here again, is an invitation to increase exposure to litigation.
So the Berkeley group said this is, they recognize this as an area that is a concern for the Planning Commission through the kickoff. And they'll identify that, I'm sure, in their diagnostic. But this is an area for follow-up work with that, that group as well, that they can bring some, what they think are best practices from other localities and share those with us. And together with that process, and County Attorney drafts some local legislation that perhaps has been court-tested other places that we might not be aware of. Then we can do our best to provide code that provides the coverage and protection that you want, that's not so risky as to invite litigation.
Sure.
Or invites litigation and you start to chisel on what the edges of the envelope are.
Yeah.
Which I would rather not do.
And then to just, just sort of recap what we discussed last month, you know, we do value agriculture in this county. And we put it at the forefront of our comprehensive plan. And then the sort of long arm of Richmond has introduced all of this farm winery, farm brewery, farm distillery language in the code. And so what we envisioned as very protective has now been corrupted from the allowances out of Richmond. And so how do we keep that from happening? And for the farm winery, farm brewery, farm distillery operations really be true to what I think Richmond intended? Which is that they are primarily agricultural undertaking instead of a, a bar in the middle of the country, which nobody wants to live next to.
Or retail outlets and ag without really any bona fide agricultural operations.
Correct. So I just, I think there's gotta be some middle ground that we can claim for the county here and, and understand what Richmond is trying to accomplish and give credit to the people who are growing grapes and doing things that they're supposed to be doing. But at the same time, protect, you know, homeowners and folks that live near agriculture and, and want to live near agriculture and, and not a bar.
Right.
I'm wondering if there's, because Richmond years ago started down this path, I think it was McAuliffe and the Governor's Mansion. I assumed he had kegs from the local breweries brought in. Because it all of a sudden just took off, that they were just, yes, yes, yes to the breweries and distilleries and wineries. And the lobbyists have tons of money and that, everybody just needs to understand the beer and wine.
Started under Dave Albo, a Republican who was in the West Springfield District, who, and that's where I went to high school. So he really was a dirtball. And I say that respectfully.
If that's possible, go ahead.
That's where it started, and that was about 20 years ago.
So knowing that, I'm wondering, I think I read something that Albemarle did or another county did that is setting like boundaries around where things can be or how far from a main road, or is there a way to set?
I think transportation is a, is a big, Mr. Goff, and I've talked some about how transportation plays in and access to transportation. But we recognize, Planning Commission recognizes that Rappahannock's unique in a lot of ways because of the amount of agricultural zone properties you have or parcels you have. Whereas many other localities don't have that same wide open ag issue. Chesterfield, Fairfax probably don't worry about these ag by right issues.
Nope.
But it's profound here now because of the percentage of agricultural land. And some of it's down, you know, small secondary roads.
Ms. Butler, you remember our meeting on agritourism entrance not too long ago, a few weeks ago or a month ago? Remember that? You're pulling in, I'm pulling out.
Oh, yeah.
Right, I mean, that's.
This is close to hitting, and I have to back into the highway. But I'd like to say there should not be any commercial things on any private name. A private name does not anybody's shared driveway.
Right.
Yep.
But anyway, we had that recent experience, I thought it was pretty telling.
Thank you. So I don't know if there's a way to kind of take it from different angles and see if we can get creative that protects.
I just, whatever, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but.
It sounds like Berkeley, we're just gonna.
Yeah, for sure, that's one angle. But I think just from our own county staff perspective, we really need to think hard about how we just, and maybe we meet the Berkeley group in the middle, but just figure out how we strengthen our ordinance and make it more, to quote Mr. Goff, toothy. And maybe it is public safety. And that's certainly been at the root of certain of our somewhat recent special exception permit denials. And I think that that is very much our job. It's to evaluate when an application for even an agritourism-type operation doesn't make any sense from a community safety perspective. So maybe that gets us out of that more problematic, state-mandated, usual and customary area of the Code of Virginia. It doesn't matter to me, I just, I feel like when you see something that any reasonable person says is not right, how can we be fully precluded by our own local ordinance to not be able to take action to protect life and safety? It's absurd.
Okay, so it sounds like County Attorney's working on it, Planning Commission's on it. That's good to me.
Thanks for adding that.
Thank you.
All right, Lord Fairfax update.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd asked for this item to be added to the agenda today. It's a follow-up to our letter to the Chancellor at the time, Glenn Dubois, regarding the LFCC name change that was proposed last year. With time, things do change. And I drove past the Flock here campus location about two weeks ago and noticed none of the signage had been changed on 29, that the Lord Fairfax sign for the Lord Fairfax Parkway was still in place off of 29. And I thought, well, maybe it's not too late to try to get this stopped. Because I know it was predicted at the time to cost about $300,000. And I don't think that included all the VDOT signage that's involved. So it's probably about a half million or more dollar project with the way that inflation has been going. And I would hope that we would revisit this and prepare a letter to send to Glevenor Youngkin as he seats the board, appoints the board members for the Community College Board, and ask him to, go ahead. And Mr. Chancellor Dubois is retiring in June. So with his leaving, there's an opportunity, I think, for new appointees on the College Board. And he could maybe get this decision reversed. And I've included an outline that proposes all the reasons that I support this and ask for your support. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, to piggyback on that, I mentioned Springfield. Pat Hardees, who's on the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors, was in high school two years behind me. And he sends out an email to just about anybody, I guess, that wants to be on it, his email list. But there's a group in Fairfax County that is bent on changing names. And Springfield is one of them. And for the life of me, I can't understand why someone would find that offensive enough to change it. But like he points out, it's not just a signage, but there's just multiple layers of legal documentation that goes back years that would now have no reference if you start changing names in, you know, in this time period. But we had the same thing with Lord Fairfax, and I don't think that that was even looked at. You're, you know, you, you, you're talking about highway signage, that's one thing. But there's still, I, I, I think we're six months now or more since they said that they were gonna change the name. And there's still, everybody's referring it, you know, to Lord Fairfax Community College, LFCC, LFCC, everything's still LFCC. Because they didn't go down that path yet. It's, it's a, it's a monumental change and it's momentous in size. And they didn't take that into consideration. And I think they just want it to be caught up in this wokeness. And it's, we had people up there that just wasted time that they could have been using on education and programs for the youth and for, for, for everybody. Because it's not just youth that go to school at these community colleges. They fill a vital role in the community. And, and instead of being concerned about that, they went down this other path. And I really think that we ought to get, get back on top of that.
Any other comments?
If anyone has any questions about the points in that line, I'm happy to answer them. And I would just say, you know, what we were sort of led to believe last year was that the renaming of the community colleges are rebranding. I think the rebranding has not been very successful. No one, even people that supported a name change that I know detest the name Laurel Ridge. People tell me it sounds like a cheap subdivision. And I think it's, I think they could have done a whole lot better. And their enrollment has dropped 5%. I'm sure you all saw the recent article, I think it was in the Rappahannock News. They've lost 5% enrollment where Germana has increased by 15%. I think in failing to concentrate on the fundamentals like student services, they've really dropped the ball. And I, I think we should send this letter to our, our new governor and ask him to save us some money and make a good decision in the process.
I went to George Mason, and I'm glad they have not changed the name. What I gleaned from their website was they're gonna change it in May. And that there are no taxpayer dollars paying for any of this.
Everything is taxpayer-funded. I mean, I don't know how to break it out any other way.
Well, I can tell you. So it's from vending refreshments.
Right, but if they weren't spending it on.
Profits from the bookstore. This is just what they've said on the website. And considering that this new governor is doing good things for Virginia, we've already sent, well, I wasn't on board, but the letter has been sent. The process that was done through which the name was changed, I think a lot of people had a problem. And I think you guys did the right thing to send the letter. I'm for moving forward, not moving backwards. So, and, and the, in the name of civility, which I put at the highest value, I don't feel like this would send the right signal from Little Rappahannock County, considering we've already sent the letter. And they're changing the name in May, which is two months away. That's just my thoughts.
Well, the letter was sent to the Chancellor at the time, Glenn Dubois. And his response to us much was pretty much, I'll put it in my circular file. And so to my mind, this is a chance to appeal that decision, especially since he's retiring and there's someone else that we can talk to. There was no real sense in appealing the decision at that time because that was the governor who had appointed him. And it would be reasonable to expect that he was fulfilling his wishes. I think now would be, well, it would be reasonable to expect we would have a different response.
Laurel Ridge is not a good name.
It's terrible.
Well, maybe we write a letter and complain about the name.
So the branding of the company.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, back when we sent the letter, I think I even made the motion that we send a letter. And that was after hearing from five, four, four constituents who were opposed to the name change. And nobody contacted me at the time to say that they wanted the name change. And so I feel like to Dan's point, maybe we sent the letter, I don't know, and 60 days remaining, and if that's correct, until he changes the name, I, I just don't. Yeah, I feel like we're expending energy laterally here instead of just moving on with other stuff. I mean, we've covered some important stuff today, and that's where I make this spend our time. I'm just, I'm kind of done with this issue. And I don't think we're gonna affect any change at this late stage, and we tried. And we tried. And I told my constituents who complained about the name change back when it was all high profile in the news that, you know, we're not, we're not on the Community College Board. And I had no problem making a statement on their behalf since I hadn't heard from anyone who said, oh, definitely change the name. So we did. I just don't get the point at this. I mean, I appreciate you bringing it up again. And I think it's important to have the discussion, but I don't, I don't know what else we're gonna, what else we're gonna accomplish.
Well, at this point, we don't really know where they are, and they may be too far down the road, and that may be the answer we get. But it doesn't hurt to send a letter and find out.
My only concern with that kind of thought process is I want, I think everybody here wants Richmond to see a letter from Rappahannock County and go, we need to read that. That's, you know, they don't write us often. This is important. If we send letters to Richmond that repeat what we said, I just think it starts, the sky is falling kind of.
It desensitizes people to our opinion, maybe.
And I do believe the horse has left the stable, gone out to the field, and is enjoying the sunshine at this point because it's, they've spent the money to rename, so.
So I've got three noes then.
I think so. Any further discussion?
I just think it's never too late to do the right thing, and I'm sorry people don't feel the same way.
I feel the same way. It's right to do the right thing. I just don't think this is the right thing.
No doubt.
All right, moving on. Does anybody need a break?
Yeah.
I do.
Yep, all right, just a quick five minute break. Business with health insurance program approvals.
Thank you. I wanted to put this matter before the boards as early as I could. As noted earlier during this meeting, you have several meetings during the month of March during which you can make a definitive decision on this. But we must provide our response to this local choice by March 25th. And that would be the plans we are offering, which I would recommend that we not change the plans we're offering. And then the cost share being offered. Insurance rates have gone up eight and a half percent. And I've prepared two different options for you. Option A, which basically aligns with what we've been doing over the last several years, providing 100% of employee only coverage for the richer plan. And then evenly split the cost increase for dependent coverage between the county and the employees. And option B tries to equitably split the dollar increase between the county and the employees. There's plenty of time to work this out over, over this month in your various meetings. I did prepare a spreadsheet. Just want to make sure you understand what's happening in this spreadsheet. So when you look at it after the meeting, you certainly can ask me questions anytime. But this top block is for the current fiscal year. Down the left side is the various plans that we offer, the 250 deductible, 2,000 deductible, whether it's comprehensive dental or preventative dental. That's the PD. So you can see there's a pack, a group of 250, one with comprehensive, one preventative, one comprehensive, one preventative for K1,000. You can see that the next column is how many employees we have enrolled in each one of these plans. You can see the total monthly premium for the plan for FY '22. How much it is, how much the county pays for a, and the ER is employer pays for the single coverage. How much the employer pays for the dual coverage, how much the employer pays for the family coverage, and then how much the employer pays for all of them put together. Next column is the annual contribution for the county. These are not small numbers. So if you have a family coverage, the county pays $15,612. That's a lot of money. Then you can see the next column, the monthly amount that an employee covers, which is simply subtracting the total, using the total, subtracting out what the county pays, and you come to what the employee pays. And then you can see what the employee pays on an annual basis. You can bring that all down to totals based on the number enrolled in each plan. You can see that the monthly annual totals, the county pays $758,910 a year to provide health insurance to your staff. The employees pay $144,000. So the total coverage is 84%. So with walking through that, lower on the sheet are two options. I think I said A and B in the narrative in here. It's one and two here. But the first is the typical, we continue to pay 100% of the singles. So this employee premium for the singles now $823, and you can see that running down this column. And you really just jump to the bottom. You can see total, the change over FY '22, it's a $65,000 increase for the county portion and a $12,000 increase for the employee portion, or a total of $77,800 increase for both. You could change to something that splits the cost about $39,000, $40,000 to the county and $38,000 to the staff as an alternate option. I told you a couple of years ago, if health insurance keeps going up and we keep paying 100% of the employee only for the K250 and keep paying the amounts we're paying for the dependent, our costs are going to go up a lot and quickly. And you can see that that's happening with now the cost being 824,244 if we stay with the same course, as opposed to just under $800,000 if you change. And you could change any number of things. You'll see in a couple of days that for right now in my proposed budget, I'm including option one. And if the board shifts away from that, those dollars could be used for some other purpose to include additional paygo for capital needs that you just talked about a whole, whole lot. So welcome your questions after today or today. And would ask that during one of your first work sessions, that this be a main focal point so we can get the response back to the local choice by the 25th deadline.
Mr. Fraser, I believe this is where you say, would you please repeat that?
Yeah.
Right.
The problem is, I mean, our employees, we lose so many on an annual basis just because of, you know, other counties pay better than we do. And the General Assembly, for some reason, seems to think that a deputy should make more in Culpeper or Falkir Warren than they do in Rappahannock. And they basically pay other counties to entice our employees away. And here we are, you know, I watched gas go up at 20 cent increments several times last week. So, you know, I mean, we just have everything hitting our employees at one time. I don't know how we could hit them with a substantial insurance increase either.
I agree.
I didn't cover, the right most column shows the employee and employer additional costs.
So in a nutshell, what's our leave it alone for the time being option?
Option one.
Okay. And so we went through this in our last fiscal year.
Two fiscal years ago.
Was it? Wow, time flies. And, and I, I think we, we set it, set any change aside because we were on the front end of the pandemic, if I, if I'm keeping my ears straight. And so here we are on the back end of it. And I think Mr. Fraser makes a good point about consumer day to day costs and our local employee retention ability and competitiveness with other localities. We don't, it sounds like we don't have to make a decision on this.
We don't, but you can. Put this to bed right now.
I would, I would love to put it to bed right now. And I'll make a motion that we change nothing for our county employees with regard to the health insurance, which.
You mean, you.
Option one.
Option one A.
Which is changing a lot.
I was getting there.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. I'll second it. I think that's, this is the wrong time to, to change things on our staff.
I just wonder, with everything making its way through Richmond right now, I think the last I heard is we will have a mandated increase for employees this year?
Yes.
So.
Very likely, 5% increase for the Senate, 4% plus 1% bonus for the House. We'll see how that shakes up and wins in the long run.
I'm just contemplating, even with going with option A, it's still an increase. But if the, if the base rate is increasing too, that's good.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of option A?
Can I ask one question? Has anybody heard from any of the employees what their preference to do is?
They, all they know, there's an eight and a half percent increase proposed.
Thank you, sorry.
It's okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Wow, we just helped you move forward with a large chunk of money. All right, county administration, staff organization change.
Thank you. I've sent this memo to the board on the 18th of February requesting your authorization for me to advertise and hire two positions to replace the one position we have now for the Director of HR and Special Programs. Those two positions would be a HR payroll clerk and an Assistant County Administrator. The memo speaks for itself. There's a lot of things that the board wants to accomplish. And I believe we need more capacity, staff capacity to get that done. Happy to answer any questions.
So my question is, my, my base, just to get this discussion started, there's one, one functional area, I think, in Rappahannock County government that works extremely well. And it works extremely well because we have a, we have a team that seems to mesh perfectly together. And that team would include you, Mr. Curry, and our treasurer, Ms. Nick. And our cash position, I think, speaks volumes to your excellent cooperation with one another in matters of fiscal management. And I acknowledge that Ms. Nick is providing to us functions that go well beyond what she is obligated to do as a county treasurer within the Commonwealth. And so without, without speaking for her, I would hope that you and Ms. Nick in, after any additional hiring we might do would still handle those functions together. And I just wonder if in defining the responsibilities of those you're proposing to hire, if you've thought at all about handing off any of those fiscal functions to someone else.
I have, and I do plan to do that. And I can't do it all. So I can do it all, but it's going to suffer. And I can't do the land use and the building stuff and the finance. I would certainly still be in responsible charge, and it would be my responsibility to make sure it works.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we're a small county. I think we lost 25 people or something like that in population last census. I don't feel like this is a county that should have layer upon layer bureaucracy. But I also think there are some critical areas that have to be managed better than they're currently being managed. And so when I think about hiring, I think about land use and planning in particular. I mean, that's where the rubber meets the road in all things Rappahannock County. I feel strongly that your, your primary, well, I know you have multiple areas of focus, and I don't want to take anything away from that. But your, your fiscal management acumen is superb. And you and Ms. Nick make a great team. And I just, I, I think as we talk about potentially authorizing the hiring of additional staff, we need to also define where you're going to remain focused. So that's my first, my first comment is I really would hate to see any instability introduced into the fiscal management of our county. And then the second area is just management oversight of staff. And I want to make sure that whatever hiring we do, that that remains your primary responsibility and duty and that we aren't simply handing off to a new hire the job of managing our very small staff, which I think is something that you, you, you can handle and should handle. And so I'd be interested to know what you're thinking about in that regard.
Sure. Let me say in general, I contemplated this for a while on whether it made sense to hire in on the community development side or the HR finance side. Obviously, we've been fairly successful with the finance work. And we don't do a ton of community development work here. Let me say, I'm not a finance director, but I play one here in Rappahannock County. I am a civil engineer and was, most recently in my last job, the Deputy County Administrator for Community Development. And that was my focus area.
Yeah.
And so after thinking about how we can best move forward, I thought it would be smartest to bring in expertise in the HR finance area and allow me to spend more time in the community development side and facility management, which I also have experienced within the past. I think that makes the most sense. It doesn't mean that I will not be involved in the other things. They'll all have my name on it, so to say, and my responsibility.
Where would land use and planning fall in all of those?
I'd say community development.
Okay.
Well, I'd just like to say that I thought your letter to us was incredibly thoughtful, and it struck me as completely genuine. And I can't thank you enough for what you have done for our county. And it doesn't go a day without people coming up to me saying, man, we are so lucky to have Gary. And I, I want to support your work efforts in any way that I feel we can. And I'd also like you to be able to take Saturday off occasionally, which I know you don't typically do. And I think that, I, I hear what Mr. Whitson is saying. You have done an incredible job to get our county up to this place where we have you and Ms. Nick incredible transparency financially, and we've got cash in the bank. And so I support this, your letter to us and where you're asking us for help. And I, I hope that it can help us to, to, to really, what I feel is the state of Virginia is growing, and they want all their localities to grow. And we are a no-growth county. And that is going to take work. And there aren't many counties in Virginia that are no-growth. I see a lot of counties raising their hands for Pepsi plants and Gatorade plants and Walmarts. And we don't want any of those.
Right.
And I think to continue down the path of being rural, we have to put in the work. So I support it. Thanks.
I think in all this discussion about staff, I think we forgot, we've got one very dedicated member right here in the room taking minutes, and we, we just kind of ignored the fact that we've got other staff members. We're not talking about getting rid of the staff that we have.
No, sir.
Now, you've got one retiring, right?
Yeah, Ms. May is retiring.
We can pass a resolution that we don't want her to retire.
You can do that.
I second that motion.
That's solved. Issue solved.
Strong letter to follow.
I'm not saying you don't need help. I don't know about an entirely new physician, though. Full time physician.
Certainly the pleasure of the board.
I'll just say, I understand that there are things that need to get done. And I look at the list, and the list has been, I was cleaning out some papers this weekend, 2019 date on some of these things. I would also add, I have always supported the county administrator getting one-off help to work through projects as needed. And I think I've always been clear about that to my fellow board members and to the county administrator. So I just question the wisdom of hiring, making a permanent hire when perhaps some of these things could be worked through on a case by case basis. And then once those items have been worked through, that have been sort of in the wind, we can get to a place where we can evaluate if we truly need another new hire. Whether we bring on someone to do a special project for us or whether we make an entirely new hire, whomever we go with, will require supervision. The amount of supervision is the same. There's no, there's no benefit to hiring, to making a new permanent hire. So that's my thought on it. I don't want to incur an additional, what is it, $100,000 a year in recurring payroll to get through some of these things. But I do want to get through them. And I've always felt that way.
I think what, what I would benefit from in the, Gary's memorandum, I think, is a great starting point. I don't want to belabor this discussion too long, but. starting point. I don't want to belabor this discussion too long, but just going back to my comments about functional areas of our relatively straightforward and relatively small county government, I would, I would like to see defined a job description for who we would hire and understand clearly Mr. Curry's sort of ongoing areas of focus and think through and make sure that we're making the right decision, because, again, I'll come back to land use and planning, and I think it'd be great, Gary, for you to have more time to manage all of that, but I also want to understand staff management, and I want to understand very clearly how financial matters would be handled going forward. So, I think what I, and again, I don't want to, I don't want to belabor this too long because I understand there's some urgency with Ms. May's pending retirement, but I think it would be really wise of us to at least understand how this is all going to work and who's going to do what with some degree of specificity if we were to make a decision to hire someone else. And I don't want, and I don't want to, I don't want to overstep and, and take away the, take away from you the ability to define this. I just would like to see.
Yeah, I tried to do that in the memo. What I, what I hope is clear is what can't continue is the board thinking that I'm going to be the point on every single thing. The library, social services.
Yeah, I agree.
Land use, finance, everything.
Broadband.
And broadband, I mean, everything. And, and that's great, and, you know, obviously it's all my responsibility, but, you know, I'm getting to the point where seven days a week doesn't work for me.
Yeah, and, and we won't.
You know, these are choices that have to be made.
Yeah, and don't get me wrong, I mean, at least from my position as one, one member of our board, I, I get all that. I just, I mean, we've had discussions about staff and management of staff and all that, and so I just want to, I kind of want to understand how all that's going to work out going forward, and I just don't want to, I just don't want to add layers, frankly, to avoid problems or to overcomplicate problems. So, I just want, I just want a clear understanding of, of how your position will be complemented by the person or persons you are proposing to hire, and who, generally speaking, who would do what.
Yeah, I thought, I thought I laid that out in the memo.
If I understand correctly, with Ms. May's retirement, I mean, there's a huge chunk that she does that I don't think we really, I don't have a good picture in my head of everything she does. When you say HR or special projects, I really don't, you know.
If I can, that was the same night that position was created with a vote, that the same night the bike trail was voted for, and there was, and I, and I, and I mentioned that. I said, "We're now creating a, a county position with no job description," and they said, "A job description would be forthcoming," and how long ago was that?
My thing is, I don't think we want our county to go without someone that's got the skills and the background to do HR plus these other requirements that Mr. Curry put in his document, and to find somebody, you know, her, she's out in May, in this hiring situation is going to be crazy difficult.
Mayor's her last name, that's not when we're going to let her go.
The more we, we wait on approval moving forward, you know, it's just, you get in those, I don't know about you, looking for employees. It is not an easy market right now. I do know that you're being torn in multiple directions, and we've got to find a way to, to make your job more manageable as a manager of the employee, of the staff, because right now you're, you're doing the work, and it's very difficult to do the work and manage a team and know exactly what your team needs. It's just about, and I don't know how you can do it in the, in the setup that we have today. So, I don't know what we would need, Mr. Whitson, if you've got specifics.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll be as specific as I can be here. I think there, we have a relatively small local government. Mr. Curry knows that in recent weeks I've had constituent interaction that suggests to me that there, there are areas of our very small local government that are not functioning well, at least from my perspective and that of the experiences of my constituents, and so all I want to ensure is that Mr. Curry is still in charge and that he's managing county staff. That's.
Well, I mean, obviously, I'm in charge. It all is my responsibility, and you're speaking to land use matters, and I'm telling you that this would allow me to flex my previous experience in that area more with more attention and time and either resolve whatever issues we have or one way or another.
But that also includes a human resources management component of the position, and I just want to make sure that we're not introducing a layer of local government bureaucracy to take on that responsibility, because I think that's, that should be yours. Personnel management should be yours.
Could I interject just for a second? I mean, if, if the board has an idea that it may move in this direction, could we, could we keep an open mind toward maybe creating this position, but at the same time not actually approve it until we have a, a job description? Because if we don't, we're just going to do the same thing that we did four years ago, and I don't, I don't see the purpose in that, because I used to be able to use that as a, as a point of contention with school board budget because they used to do that, but I can't do that anymore when this county board is doing that. So, we don't create positions off a budget without job descriptions. It doesn't make any sense. You, I don't know if y'all would do it in your, your personal business, but I asked a former member of the board, I said, "Would you, you know, hire somebody to do something and then not know what you're hiring them to do?" And they said, "Yeah, if I needed them." And I mean, does that make any sense?
Yeah, I think that's what I've been saying.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't know that we need them, then we don't need them, but if we are going to create a position, I think we ought to have a detailed job description.
Is it something we can, noting that time is of the essence, and given that our earlier discussion that we have many board meetings coming up, may, let me just ask Mr. Curry or Ms. Donahue procedurally, is it something that we could vote on at one of our upcoming budget sessions? Is there any reason, is there anything that would preclude us from doing that, just to get a, just to get a job description, separate and apart from the memorandum, and I'm not trying to create extra work, but I think Mr. Frazier makes a good point. I agree with him.
Obviously, there'll be a job description before anybody's hired, and I'd be happy to create one for any future meeting. The board would like to see it.
And can we vote on this?
Anytime you want.
Anytime, yeah. So, you want to just table it until the next meeting? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I mean, it could be tabled.
If we could get a job description.
Yeah, if, if, I'd like a job description for sure. I agree with Mr. Frazier. Again, I, Mr. Curry's right, it's, your memorandum is super thoughtful. I just, I would just like to have a clear understanding of what this person or these people would do and how that would complement your, your own contemplated areas of focus.
Everybody's in agreement? We'll move on.
Right.
Purchasing award.
Process matter to the Building Committee regarding HVAC, HVAC equipment replacement for the jail building and part of the sheriff's office. This is minisplit type equipment for that facility. The board remembers, a couple of years ago, the boiler failed. We've been limping along with temporary heating. Cooling really doesn't work there. To fully use that space for whatever future use, you need good temperature and humidity control. This system that is quoted by Colonial Web would provide that. There are two proposals attached, and don't blame me for the spelling of sheriff. One is a little more flexible than the other because it uses a couple larger condenser units that multiple heads would connect to. That would allow you to reconfigure the interior spaces multiple different ways with different heads in the future if the size of rooms changed. There's a cooperative procurement vehicle through the UVA, and so you could jump right to getting this done. This includes the detailed design permitting and installation, and the cost to do that is $83,738. I would recommend about a 5% installation contingency of $4,000.
What is UVA? What is UVA?
University of Virginia.
Oh, okay.
So, you're taking advantage of a rider clause, correct?
I'm sorry?
You're taking advantage of a rider clause in that country.
Yeah, the cooperative procurement clause in UVA's contract.
Oh, okay.
So, they've already competed the pricing.
Local government stuff, okay.
This would, this would be coming, being paid for by the capital fund line for space needs planning, which there was $300,000 at the beginning of the year and still a whole lot left.
I'll put forward a motion that we award the replacement of the HVAC system of the former jail to Colonial Web using a cooperative contract executed by University of Virginia in an amount of $83,738 plus a plus or minus 5% installation contingency of $4,000.
And that's for the multisplit option?
Right.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Call the question.
Call the question, sorry. Thank you, sorry. I thought you were going to say something. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Use of former magistrate building.
There's discussion at your joint meeting last weekend with the BFRA Executive Committee regarding the use of the magistrate's building, former magistrate's building, 401 Mount Salem Ave, right over here in the corner of White Building. For use as by the EMS staff, after considering various alternatives, the different fire stations, and what we have available here came to the conclusion, staff came to the conclusion that the magistrate's building made the most sense. The fire stations don't have a dedicated room. Company One was planning on potentially, if they had to, placing a bed into their meeting room and rolling it away every day, and then they've been disinclined so far to adopt policies that are aligned with county policies as it relates to HR and different matters. The building over there is reasonably sized, and of course, our goal is not to expand the mission much here because we want the volunteers to continue to do what they're doing. This is just the support. This shows about the inside of the building layout right now, and we believe this provides enough space for a quick bunk room, office, storage, and restroom facilities would be modified to include a shower.
When did the attachment get added to this agenda item?
I added it this morning when I realized that we had it as part of the space needs study. That's been up on board docs for a couple of years. This is the existing floor behind this. Doesn't show any changes. And the attic is, that's the attic, which is really just storage. That's a circular stairs, which are probably coming out. They're not very efficient, and they're very hard to use.
A pole there.
I'll put forward a motion to authorize use of the former magistrate's building. Address is 401 Mount Salem Ave by the Rappahannock County Fire and Rescue Department.
I'll second that.
Do we have a cost estimate of what it's going to cost to do this?
You have a motion and a second. Now we're in discussion.
All the renovations will be, are planned to be done by county staff using current fiscal year dollars.
But I believe, y'all had said the other night that it was planned for the 14th, but I don't think you've got enough time to do that.
No, we'll, currently have a shower in the sheriff's office. That will be a way to move our way into the process gradually.
So, then you have a way to start on the 14th if necessary.
That's right. That would include, coat of paint.
Any further discussion?
I would just say, when I reviewed this agenda item earlier, the attachment wasn't included, and I was, I was not really clear on what we were being asked to approve and just being told that we needed to do it quickly. I still feel like I'm not really clear on what we're being asked to approve, and I have reservations about the way this was all done, because as I've said in other meetings, the concept of using Company One went through the companies, the association, the public safety committee, before it came to the board of supervisors, and I, I don't hear a lot of buy-in for this plan, and that's very unfortunate.
I did speak with Ms. Speaker at the end of the meeting the other day, and she said she was fine with it, that to allow them to be in the magistrate building was okay by her. I don't know if she speaks for the company or not, but.
Oh, and I guess that takes us back to the place we were a couple of days ago, where I was told that two chiefs supported this, but I don't know which two chiefs it was. And the fact of the matter is, if you're doing something because two chiefs support it, there are seven chiefs total, and I wonder what the other five chiefs think. And I may be alone in this, and you all may decide to do it, but I, I have serious reservations. Tom Selleck said it best in the 80s movie, Three Men and a Baby. It doesn't really matter what I say, it matters how I say it, when he was reading from the Sports Illustrated to the little baby, and she was just eating it up. So, I, I think there are some real problems with the way this was brought forward, and it might be a good idea, but I don't know it was a good idea, because I don't believe that any idea can be a good idea unless it has buy-in from all parties involved, and I know that is cumbersome, but I, I have a lot of hesitation with moving something forward with so little buy-in.
Well, while, while we're there, I, I spoke to different members of the Fire and Rescue, you know, volunteer group from around the county, and they are almost in unison, speaking one-on-one, that they feel that they're being circumvented, so I just.
This is, in my mind, this is to get the ALS up and running, the crash buggy that we had approved, what, last year, I think. So, to get this up and running by March 14th in some sense or another, I think gives the citizens of Rappahannock County a good feeling that we're at least doing what we said we were going to do. If we find out it's the wrong building, okay, but in my mind, let's get this running and see how it works, and we can deal with the other questions later. And it doesn't sound like it's going to cost as much to get this one up and running, and Company One did have a chance a year or so ago to get started in that direction and obviously chose not to, so I'm fine.
I don't think that's a fair statement. Did the Public Safety Committee review this proposal on Monday or Tuesday when y'all met last week? Why not?
A building that people are going to be housed in, I'm not sure how that would be.
But it would affect how they respond to public safety issues.
Staff believes this is the best way to handle this department and this chase vehicle having proximal to the sheriff's office and dispatch for a lot of different reasons. We think it's central to the county. Company One is not prepared to provide this service for us right now. If the board doesn't want to proceed with this, then vote, say no, and you won't do it.
I do.
You going to call for the question? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Present.
I didn't hear Mr. Frazier's vote.
I'll vote aye, but I, I kind of wish that the board had been involved in this for the last couple of months, that this was actually being discussed.
Great.
Board of zoning appeals.
I asked for this to be on the agenda. I guess y'all know that, that BZA decision of that night, or two weeks ago now, is, is being appealed in court. I don't know if there's going to be an appeal by the neighbor that had a separate attorney that night of the meeting, but it was a fiasco. It really was. I, I had very serious reservations that this present BZA would be the worst BZA in Rappahannock's history of at least the last 40 years, and I wish I had been wrong. But if y'all have time to watch that video of that meeting, they were sitting there. We had one individual member that was trying to make up their own interpretations, their own definitions, and they don't have that ability, and that's how the whole thing started off. They had, without voting approval in a previous meeting, they had the chair who had contracted for legal, uh, legal counsel that night. that night with the sole purpose of trying to determine of, of the definition of a kennel, so whether they're, whether or not that they would actually hear that application, that the room was full. It was unprecedented, I believe. I believe if they were going to do that, they could have simply not scheduled it for a public hearing, and then voted to have legal counsel there, and went through that part of the process. But I don't even know that they were actually enabled to do that, because I thought, prior to an application, that was a purview of the zoning administrator, which Mr. Curry brought forward that night, and so did Mr. Brown, who was sitting over here representing the applicant, that that actually was a purview of the, of the zoning administrator to make a determination. And since they weren't appealing a decision that night, that it was actually out of place on the agenda. So it, it was just a real fiasco. And then, the chair, when I asked a question, he told me to sit down. And he had had, several members of this, of the BZA had had conversation with different people in the audience leading up to that point. I asked one question, I'm told to sit down, and then he says, this is between you and me, or you and I. I don't know exactly how he worded it.
You and me.
So he's clearly not able to be objective in his dealings as a chair. So I guess what I would like this board to do is to ask, and I brought this forward in two thousand sixteen, that, that this board provide funds for proper training of both the BZA and Planning Commission members, and they agreed to it. And I don't know how many have taken them up on that, but I believe that we should not see any members of the body for the Planning Commission that will not take the Planning Commission, Certified Planning Commission training. If, if, if they don't initiate getting involved in that, we give them a set of dates. If they don't do it, we don't, we don't put them on there, we take them off, whatever is, is necessary. And then I, I think that this board needs to send a, a letter to the court. I, I'm gonna send one and include the video, and, and just tell them that we strongly ask that they require BZA training for anyone that they appoint, because it, it was, it was a fiasco.
Maybe as a corollary to what you're saying, it's as good a time as any to bring it up, and it's something that the Berkeley Group consultants are aware of. I mean, if you look at, if you look at what the Rappahannock County Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals are handling in terms of permit applications, I would say, I haven't, I haven't looked at the empirical data, but it feels like more than sixty percent of the applications are tourist homes. We've talked about this before. And if you, if you took away tourist homes, there's, I mean, yeah, occasionally there are some pretty hard-fought applications like this one, where all interested parties have something to say. My view is our, and I know, I think before I was on this board, you, you at least considered changing our zoning ordinance to basically place the Board of Zoning Appeals back in a zoning appeals role.
That they would have two traditional roles.
Right, and that, and that we eliminate the, the special use permit provision of our zoning ordinance, and everything's an exception, or, and I, I think this would also be correct, whether exception or special use, everything goes Planning Commission, Board of Supervisors, and then the BZA has a, an appeals role. And with training directed at that role, I think then maybe regardless of the individuals who comprise the Board of Zoning Appeals, at any given time, their role would be limited to.
With appeals and variances.
Right, yeah, yeah, you know better than me.
Well, that's, no, no, but that's, you know, I, sometimes we forget things when we're, but it's variances and appeals, that's the traditional role. But, but I think we found out at that time that there was approximately thirty percent, or whatever the number was, of BZAs across the Commonwealth that have the additional role granted by the governing bodies of, of doing conditional use permit. But I can understand, especially after sitting through that meeting, why we might reconsider that. But at the same time, we must also consider that it's going to increase the workload that we have as a board, and of course, county attorney as well.
Well, that's where, yeah, and I, to finish my, I, I should add on the, and we had talked about this before, and I'm not sure it's a good idea, but I'm just gonna put it out there for discussion. If you look at most tourist home applications, like I think of the Eastons, I think of the Thornhills, I think of these other property owners have huge properties that come in, and it's like, I mean, yeah, the Planning Commission says, okay, it's a huge property, and you're talking about using this house for short-term rentals. We, we get criticized for not having a public hearing. It goes onto the BZA. They have a public hearing. I just, I feel like in the vast majority of tourist home applications, there are very few problems, and maybe there could be some system, and it's something we've highlighted for the Berkeley Group, maybe there could be some system where you have most non-problematic tourist home applications are handled administratively by permit, and that just leaves a handful. And then, I think, if I'm right, that most of what the Planning Commission, the BZA have been doing recently are tourist home application reviews, then arguably, and I absolutely get your point, but arguably, the increase in workload would not be great. And in my view, all of these applications, including the dog training facility and others, that sometimes by virtue of being special use permit applications because of some strange twist in our zoning ordinance, they're all ultimately land use and planning decisions, and I think we should be making those decisions. I, I just, it's hard for me to identify a distinction between special exception and special use permits.
Well, okay, this is what I was told years ago before, when I was, you know, sat over there, is that the special use was basically a neighborhood type of situation.
Right.
Special exception could take on the, the grander county-wide significance.
Right, and I, right, and I was given the same, I was given the, the same education and tutorial, but if you step back and really think about it, they're all county-wide decisions.
Well, they could have an application county-wide.
Right. So, I mean, I don't wanna, well, I am opening a can of worms, but I, I.
It's okay, I was opening the same can of worms with my next agenda item, so.
I know, I know.
It's almost time to finish.
I don't know that I'm ready, but.
I, again, after sitting through that meeting, I can see the need for doing something a little different, because if they make a legislative decision, and, and they were sitting there doing it, and, and, and the thing is, our board, sometime back in, I guess nineteen sixty-six or somewhere along the way, when the first zoning ordinance came out, they thought that that was a good idea.
Yeah.
And it worked for the majority of the years that, that I've watched it. But, but at the same time, when you give legislative authority to a, a body that's appointed by the judge, then the citizens start having.
Exactly.
A little bit of heartburn with that, because where do they fit in all of it?
Exactly. Yeah, and, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not making an issue of the individuals who comprise our current Board of Zoning Appeals. I've been thinking about this even before I was elected to our board, that the system for a little county just seems unnecessarily complicated. And frankly, I don't think it's great customer service in terms of our, the experience of our citizens. I mean, they really get kind of bounced around, I think, in many cases, more than they need to be, given that most of these applications are not particularly complicated. I'm not, I mean, the most recent one obviously got a lot of attention, but most of them, it's like, wow, okay, I've come to the Planning Commission for a preliminary review. Okay, now we're talking about two primitive campsites. Please come back for a public hearing. Okay, now that's over. Now go to another public. It's a lot. And now that one, that one happened to come to the Board of Supervisors, but many of those end up going to the Board of Zoning Appeals after the Planning Commission's worked out a lot. And it just seems unnecessarily complicated and arbitrary.
This is great conversation. Was there something, Mr. Fraser, you wanted, because I see it's down for action discussion information, do you wanna?
Well, I, I really, I don't know. I haven't taken a stab at, at trying to draft a letter to the judge from this board, but I mean, I, I believe may, maybe I could work with Mr. Curry, and we could bring it back, maybe add it to the agenda of one of those budget discussions. But I really think that we ought to send a letter to the judge saying that we strongly support a requirement that they take training.
I think you mentioned the Board of Equalization is mandated to take training before they can be seen as a BOE member, but BZA doesn't have a parallel requirement.
Education is good.
Yep.
It, it appears that with the BZA, it, it's a, it's not enforced.
I think.
Has everybody watched that video?
Yeah.
I haven't queued up, I haven't yet, but I need to.
Well, I got two and a half hours.
Yeah.
I did, I have told the BZA before, they need some local training on the county ordinance, and it's something that hasn't managed to get done. That is also important, and something they're not going to get in a, in a state BZA course. They need to understand our county ordinance as well.
Well, but, but definitions are, are created by the General Assembly.
And they're.
And the General Assembly did that because it's got to mesh with states around us, so.
Sure.
I mean, it was really bizarre.
I just think it's too complicated for a little county as it's organized currently, so maybe we can find some way.
So I, I take that as a consensus, that we can take a stab at drafting a letter, respectful of the judge's position and all of this.
Sure.
Sure.
I, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Does that include a letter to the BZA asking them to seek training?
Uh, yeah, well, yeah, let's, let's do that, too.
Can we arrange it for, arrange it for them?
Yes.
And, and Planning Commission, too. I mean, my training admittedly has been through the county, or county supervised certification program, which had land use and zoning elements, but.
I knew I was gonna hear it at least once, and we had one former BZA member come in and used the phrase, "I feel." And that was the first thing that, I remember Mike Chandler telling us when we took those classes years ago, the first person to say, "I felt," or "I believe," or "I thought" just lost a case on behalf of the locality, because zoning has no feelings. Am I right, Mr. Goff?
You're exactly right.
It's, it's, it's black and white.
For about five years ago, I completely reworked the whole SARS scheme entire, to get rid of the S U P and to take it away from the BZA, and to make certain tweaks in what really needs to get a special exception. You know, a lot of it can be administrative. Mr. Curry and I have had that discussion, too, where there's quite a few things that really, really are purely administrative, and there's still being appeal avenues, so you might end up with some wackiness still on the BZA, but it wouldn't be nearly what's going on now and has gone on. So if you'll think back, I think that came to a vote in like twenty seventeen or eighteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, and, and I think it was a three to two, that vote, and, because we'd gone through and taken it out, and had kind of fleshed out, as I recall, what could be done administratively, which reduced, you know, just by going through the charts, where it says, you know, what the X is on what, because do you really need a special exception for a campground, the three tents on your back property? Do you really need, you know, a special exception for having kennels that are for four-hour training periods, when you could have, you know, a hunt club there with, with, you know, a hundred and fifty foxhounds? Am I right?
Yeah.
Right. So, you know, if you really go through it, look at some of the, the areas that could make this thing work a little smoother, and bring the truly legislative decisions to the board, take away from the BZA, I think things would run more smoothly, because you all do have the training to make these decisions.
Well, and I would, I would say that right, right after Ms. Donahue and I joined this board, we had, we had two special exception permits come before us in March of two thousand and twenty, and one is still in litigation, and one was in litigation, and both, I think, were unanimous five-nothing decisions, where we outlined very specifically tying our decision to general standards applicable to those applications in one seventy dash fifty-two and other provisions of the, of the comprehensive plan and other applicable provisions of our ordinance, and we still ended up in court. So, yeah, those decisions have to be ironclad, and they have to be rooted in our ordinance and our comp plan at a minimum, and then we still face liability. So if you're not tying, tying them to something, you almost certainly will face liability.
Yeah.
From a legal perspective, so something's gotta change.
I agree.
Well, I, to, to address the, the example with the dogs, I bet I could find an armload of people that would, would be okay with sitting on their porch watching a hundred and fifty foxhounds go across the field, and all the horses with it, and still wouldn't want a kennel next to them with dogs for four hours a day.
Correct.
So, it's, it's kind of the way we always done it, and I gave an illustration of that one time, and I could do that again, but not today, about the way we always done it. So.
Food for thought, for sure.
Well, thank you for that agenda item and.
And, and thank me for not doing the illustration right now.
Later, another day. Berkeley Group Planning Commission, Ms. Smith.
Well, I had requested this be on the agenda today for a, a conversation similar to the one we were just having, and there seemed to be some direction, not giving direction, but a heading in the direction of making changes to special exceptions, special use permits, and what can be done administratively. And I, I have serious misgivings about making any changes, and I had been in favor of administratively handling more, but frankly, the things that are being handled administratively recently, I'd say the kennel application is one, the Turner application was another. I'm very leery of giving anyone power with the stroke of a pen.
Yeah, and I think the idea there, and we've kind of covered it, is just asking the question and looking at other localities and how we improve efficiency in government. But, but, yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna undermine our ability to protect people and landscape and all of that, but I think it's a valid question, and it, it's one of many questions that I think we need to wrestle with, so.
Well, and I, I wondered, too, there's a few things that we hadn't referred for consideration, and one, one of them I hear more and more about in neighboring localities these days is data centers, and I know Culpeper has just had one proposed, and they're gonna struggle with that, I have a feeling. And then the others with the legalization of marijuana, I don't know what kind of facilities that may introduce, or how other localities are handling that. But I think there's this idea that it's sort of a small-scale operation, but from what I understand, a lot of states where this is rolled out, it's, it's very, um, it's not agriculture, it's more of like a, a production facility. And so we'll wanna really think about, you know, if that got in the wrong place, it would, it would be,
Yeah.
it would be a poor, very poor planning on our part.
Yeah.
So those were the two things, and then, I mean, there's probably more than I can envision.
Yeah.
But I think we really need to, to think preventively about bringing all of the scenarios that are revolving around us to the foreground.
So the, in the comp plan, I remember this, in memory of Phil Ruin.
Yes.
Incomparably, how, how are you?
Incomparably different.
Incomparably, incomparably different.
No one should ever say it like, Phil, we shouldn't even try.
Incomparably different, so, yeah, I mean, you're right. We gotta stick to that.
And there's, there's a phenomenon in Faukeer County that someone had brought up, actually at the Blue Dog event this summer. It's called dirt dumping, where they truck dirt in from construction sites in Northern Virginia and dump it. And it's, it's really creates an eyesore, and we, I don't think we've encountered it yet, but with the construction that's starting to happen around us, it may be on our doorstep soon.
Good point.
Yep.
I think the statute, the virtue of the state statute that prohibits that as an agricultural activity.
Really?
Yeah.
Cause a lot of it's.
There's been a lot of movement on that in the last year or two. Basically, farmers say it's ag.
Right.
Gets them out of erosion, sediment control.
Uh, just, I guess if I can mention that, I think the Berkeley Group would be great to go over events.
As part of it.
Okay.
Right. That's, that's a big part of it, and so.
Just the overall, that, and telecommunications ordinance.
Yeah.
Big deal, I think.
Gary, I think that's already on there.
These are my thoughts, okay, and.
And then solar.
Solar.
And, and Ms. Smith brought up some good additional ones.
Renewable energy.
What do we need to do on solar? I thought it pretty much.
Well, we're not gonna undo it, but.
Make sure it's.
Make sure that it's defensible, fully defensible.
I would make sure it holds water, absolutely.
Right. Yeah, but I think, I think you're right to do what we did when we did it. So it's, it's not a matter of weakening it, it's a matter of making sure that we, it's defensible if somebody were to challenge it.
I saw Page County has a big proposal coming forward for a solar.
And that's just part of the, part of the, the high-level analysis they're doing is assurance that our local ordinance and Code of Virginia are in agreement. And I, if you remember on, on the cell tower discussion. And if you remember on, on the cell tower discussion, there was that surety bond requirement that wasn't even allowed under state code. So it's a matter of making sure that whatever, whatever we're saying in our ordinance is not inconsistent with the Code of Virginia.
Well, at the time that we adopted that, it was, but they.
Right, yeah.
Subsequent language that because, if I remember correctly, because we didn't require for something else, we could no longer require for that.
Yeah, but I'm with you on, on utility scale solar. So let's just make sure we're.
Yeah, it's tight.
Tight and safe.
And I just briefly wanted to mention that I agree that specifically for tourist homes, I do not think that we should have administrative process on that.
Okay.
I do not think so. I think it just encourages, might encourage folks to just snag a piece of property and not be here. And so I would want to look carefully at that.
Yeah, and I don't.
It, the easier we make that process, I think it's easier for someone to come and kind of just do it. And we can't forget that a tourist home is a commercial enterprise, so.
Yeah.
It does create, you know, we do have to just, you know, speaking of the ag, ag by rights stuff, we just want to keep an eye on it, would be my.
Yeah, and how we balance that with workload and possibly a change role with the BZA. And that's kind of the challenge, so, okay.
Anything else, Ms. Smith, on Berkeley Group, covered it?
I just was hoping that everyone had a chance to review the video and see if, see if there's anything else that was on our minds. Again, it's sort of having been through the comp plan and thinking we were close to getting it done and then not getting it done for a while while we regrouped. I, I'm just trying to avoid a major revision or regroup at a later time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Regional VADI broadband project, I think at this time I'm supposed to adjourn. I'm sorry.
Convene.
Convene the broadband authority.
I'll be right back. You can keep going.
Okay, thank you. So the Rappahannock County Broadband Authority is convened for this meeting as a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors with regards to regional VADI broadband project.
I'll wait for Mr. Whitson, but perhaps I can take the, the time to thank Ms. Shanahan for the article that she wrote about the resolution that we have on the agenda. I think she managed to capture probably most of the issues that we're having right now that brought us to this point. So, like I said to some, somebody in response to some, I try to stay off of some of this local social media, except maybe to try and, try to keep people from going down the wrong path too long with something. And I said to someone, I said, "If you have questions, then you understand all the information that we have." And that's, that's basically where we are.
It's, he works really well, Gary.
I know.
Thank you.
It comes on, it comes on.
It's good.
Mr. Groff is just sharing me code reference to stockpile materials.
Okay.
Just looking to see if I have any emails that would be Jermaine.
That's okay.
Okay, members of the Board and the Broadband Authority, if I could, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I drafted this resolution and asked for it to be on the agenda for today's meeting, hoping that it would have been for tonight's meeting. But, you know, if y'all aren't comfortable with these dates, we can change them. But the problem is, we had a lot of educated people in this room today that spoke to waiting and, and, and working with these, whether it's Jimmy Carr with All Points or Brandon Davis with the Northern Regional Shenan, Northern Shenandoah Regional Commission. But that gentleman won't even return your emails, Madam Chair, in a, in a timely manner. So I don't know what that means to keep going forward and working with someone that doesn't even respond to your emails. So I don't know how to do that. We have less than two months to come up with an agreement between us and, well, no, 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 no. Let me back up. The VADI agreement is going to be with the Department of, and anybody can interject when I, if I say something wrong or leave out a step, but I believe the VADI agreement is going to be, that funding agreement is going to be with the Department of Community and Housing.
Housing.
Housing and Community Development.
Yeah, Housing and Community Development, I'm sorry. So it's going to be between them and the Northern Shenandoah Regional Commission, okay? So prior to that, I would envision that All Points would have their agreements with each one of the member counties, which is eight right now, including Rappahannock. Also prior to that, I would imagine that the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission would have some sort of agreement with All Points. All before Northern Shenandoah is supposed to sign their agreement with the Department of Community Development and Richmond. So that's, I believe the deadline is May 5th. And unless that deadline is moved back some, then I don't see how we can put all this stuff in place because I would like to see, we keep calling it universal broadband, but I don't know if anybody on Scrabble Road is going to be served. I don't know if people on View Town Road are going to be served or Dotson Road. Dotson Road is kind of down in a hollow. Those people can't get hit by Piedmont right now, and Comcast will not go there. So I don't know if my constituents are going to be served. I don't know if your constituents, Ms. Donahue, is going to be served. I don't know if family and friends over off Scrabble Road are going to be served. We don't know that.
My, my understanding is, because a lot of people have cornered me and said, "Are you sure I'm going to get it?" And I think the, some of the very rough sort of maps that were put out there in the very early stages of this were pretty rough. And so what I've tried to tell people, and somebody interrupt me if I'm wrong about this, what I've tried to articulate to people is if you don't have Xfinity or if you could have had Xfinity and you were tagged with a special construction charge in excess of what Xfinity would charge a normal customer under normal circumstances, then you will get coverage through the All Points broadband plan. Is that, I mean, maybe that's an oversimplification, but that's the only way I've been able to just reassure people who's covered. And that might obviate the need for maps because if I'm correct, that's a pretty straightforward definition of who gets it.
But that's, that's a conversation from August. That's not a conversation lately, that's a conversation from August.
And you're afraid to change things?
Well, we don't know. I interrupted the chair.
I was just going to say with the REC coming in and the unserved 25-3, less than that, are the targeted households, they come in through REC. So if you've got electric, then the answer is yes, because they're going to follow the electric line into your house. But as you're saying, until we see, and I think Mr. Curry has said this multiple times, until we see everything in writing, we can't say it's definitive and we can't sign a contract until we see it in writing. So I understand your sense of urgency, absolutely.
Well, but even, even further along in that same vein of thought, Mr. Whitson asked a question back in August of Mr. Carr, who was here present in, in, in the flesh. So he does exist. If he was big enough, his company was large enough to handle a contract of this size. And he, he answered the only answer he could have at that time if, if, if he thought that, you know, we were going to vote for it, and he said yes. He would have been a complete moron to say no and then expect us to vote on the affirmative.
And that had to do with access to raw materials, labor.
Right.
Given multiple localities initiating these projects concurrently.
Right. But I submit that now, seven months after the fact, he's not large enough to do this because we don't have maps, we don't have answers to simple questions. And then we have Brandon Davis, who is a state employee, if you will, a public employee who simply doesn't even answer emails.
He's with the Regional Commission, so he's, he's not a state employee.
Well, he's, but he's a government employee, local government, and he, he doesn't even answer our emails.
I didn't wait for multiple days to ask because I knew it was a, a big deal for this board. So that's when I called him and I just said, "Are you going to be able to attend?" And he said, "No." And that his hope is when he does meet with us and he is planning on meeting with us, he'll have the answers you're looking for instead of coming in here and going, "Well, let me go check on that." There, I, the way I look at it is there's a lot of moving parts happening right now and they're moving so fast. So DHCD has got to get their part done with Brandon. And I think there's another meeting this, this month with the Northern Shenandoah Regional Commission. I think at that point is when things are going to start moving much faster for us. The question is, can we keep up with the speed at that point? And how can we slow things down if we can't, in my mind? Because we may have questions that they don't have the answer to.
We just saw the budget meetings that we have to attend. How much time are we going to be able to apply to this if we, if we did get information?
I hope we will see this as a priority.
I would think so. But it's hard to prioritize something that we don't, we don't have.
Mr. Curry, what's the, what, I mean, what do you know about sort of big events coming up in this process? Just backing up for a minute, like what's happening with DHCD? What's happening with the Regional Commission? When will, just remind us all of kind of the big dates coming up?
Mr. Fraser pointed out that DHCD will have a contract with Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission. And that'll be the formal grant agreement. Northern Shenandoah Regional, Shenandoah, Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission will not be able to enter that agreement unless they have assurance that they will have funding from the counties or have a broadband system from All Points Broadband. My, my recommendation to our peer localities that that agreement be a tripartite agreement. Counties, All Points, Northern Shenandoah tying us all together for installation and then operating, going long-term. And I've suggested that to my peers. DHCD has not yet provided their template agreement to NSVRC. And they say, said that it's complicated by the fact that ARPA dollars are involved and they need to make sure the terms and conditions are lined up with that. I don't know if that will cause the 90-day contract negotiation period to be extended. I don't know that. We, there is another call set up with the counties and the Regional Commission. I don't recall the time or date at this point in time. I suspect there will be an update. In a parallel process, of course, there's been a lot of conversation about ARDOF and Chantel. And Chantel has sent each of the four counties in this regional program communication asking the counties to support their withdrawal from ARDOF. And there's some concern about the language there because in their reference, they state that the VADI grant includes the areas of the ARDOF. And in fact, the VADI grant does not include the areas of the ARDOF. At this point, it's been withheld.
Right.
So some details have to be worked out there. There, but Chantel does not want to do this project in these four counties and they're seeking county support for the FCC to withdraw from that. So that's moving forward as well. In the earlier call with DHCD, they, and when asked about contracts or agreements between sub-parties, whether they had any examples, they didn't, but they suggested we look to Middle Peninsula, who's done some work. And in fact, Gloucester and Matthews and a couple of others have a 2021 grant. And I've been in communication with their county, acting county administrator, and expect to receive those documents on Tuesday, that'd be tomorrow.
So if I could, before we get too far away from your, your points there, there's nothing, if, if the ARDOF project is canceled, Chantel walks away from it, then a large portion of Piedmont down 231 and a large portion of Stonewall aren't going to get high-speed internet.
Which is why the counties aren't, I'm not interested in bringing to the broadband authority of the board the recommendation to sign any agreement supporting waiver unless the state says you are, you definitely have the funding for that area. And so that's some of the reasons.
And a lot of people, that's, that's a problem with misinformation and information's always coming out. So it's hard to keep everybody apprised of what the information really is. But Mr. Curry sent it out, I'd already seen it prior to that, that there is a second round of these VADI grants for 223. And a process has been announced by the Department of Housing and Community Development. So there's ought to be some way that if we're going to lose the ARDOF section of the county, that we can include that in some future VADI grant that may be able to tie into this project. But if All Points is not going to take that on, then we're still left in limbo. So we need, we need some sort of a contract agreement with him that if all these stars align and all these planets align to make funding available, that he will take that part of the project on.
In the, in the DHCD award letter, they stated that the $97 million project was being awarded at 95. They're holding back the extra couple million pending the ARDOF discussion. The counties have made it clear that we want that resolved in the 90-day period. And we're driving to try to get that done, so there is no question. And DHCD does award the full $97 million within the 90-day period before the agreements are signed. And so nobody has concern that their area won't be covered.
Well, I just did want to talk too about some of the public comment that was made today. And, you know, there seems to be this prevailing opinion that this is a once-in-a-lifetime funding opportunity. But the VADI awards happen every year. I mean, every year there are VADI awards. And some counties receive multiple rounds of VADI awards in order to supply universal broadband throughout their county.
And some have applied like Fauquier and not gotten any money. So that's a, if I can interrupt one second, the VADI was $50 million, like last year, I think it was. The once-in-a-lifetime opportunity is because of the ARDOF, not the ARPO, the ARPA, the enlarged VADI from 50 million to 700 million. I mean, this is definitely not expected to repeat itself ever again because of the concern the feds have had, the state has had, and the localities have had for their citizens to have fiber to the home after COVID. So that's what's the change in VADI, it's 50 million versus 700 million.
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. So, I, I mean, I understand that. I also understand we have, I think it's through 2026 to spend our ARPA funding. So, I mean, I think that there is an option. It's not like if this doesn't happen that it's the end of the world. And we don't know what the VADI awards will be for this year or next. So, and I think there's been some, some misinformation in the press that somehow no local dollars are going into this. And indeed, that $700,000 in ARPA funding, those are local dollars. If they weren't going for VADI, they could be going for something else. And the $370,000 from the school, if they weren't being spent on VADI, they would be spent on something else. And the approximate $400,000 gap we have left in funding, I don't see any remedy for that except local dollars. And even if we choose to spend additional ARPA funding on that, it is still money that we could be spending on something else. So I did just want to talk about the costs and some of the misinformation that I see out there. Mr. Gorfine brought up decision-making and unwillingness to spend money on anything. I'll just say the examples he gave are all school examples. And so I hope he will take his concerns to the school board because while I, I share his concerns with those, I didn't see voiced today. Those are school board decisions and not board of supervisors' decisions. And I think in the years that I've been on this board, we've fully funded the school budget on every occasion except maybe one. And that was only a very small shortfall. And then we had several folks that came for public comment today that talked about rural electrification and the postal service. Those are federal programs. Those are not state-run programs. Those are federally funded programs and more analogous to the ARDOF than the VADI. Because ARDOF is a federally administered program. So I think those are some important distinctions. I think there's a lot of misinformation in the press through no fault of their own, but through some of the information that they're being given. And the lady that came from my district today, Ms. Heller, I feel terrible that we don't interface during public. interface during public comment. And I certainly did not want to interrupt her, but she seems to be under the misimpression or the misunderstanding that this will be happening soon.
Right. I do remember that part.
And that is very unfortunate because this is a multi-year rollout at best, at best.
And then, if I could interject just for a second, that's not just because All Points, and I don't want people thinking I'm picking on All Points, nobody is going to do this soon. Nobody's going to be able to do it very soon.
Between the current.
We don't know where they're going to start and which county will go first.
It's a very large undertaking and nobody's going to be able to do it soon.
I really.
Well, they'll start somewhere.
Right.
Yeah.
I believe that All Points has to have some of these answers at this point between the raw data that they had to have to even make the application for VADI. They must have kind of had some ideas of where they were going to start. And I believe now they've had that portal open for, what, six months, getting feedback from where folks are requesting service, which I believe has to strongly influence where they decide to implement their rollout. And I think they have a lot of these answers. And I'm really discouraged that we don't seem to be able to get them.
I believe we have two problems facing us, whichever board you want it to be right now. I believe, I believe All Points is overwhelmed and rightly so. And I don't know that anybody else wouldn't be. But I think that that May 5 deadline is, is just too soon. So I think, I think, you know, if the board doesn't want to do something like my resolution or you want to change the dates in the resolution, I'm fine with that. Or if we just simply send a letter, some kind of way, to the Department of Housing and Community Development that that May 5 date needs to be moved back a little bit so that we can get all this information. To go back to something like a school, if we were just going to put a $100,000 roof on that building that Mr. Gorfine was complaining about, or where the school board was going to do it, whichever body was going to do that and finance it, it would require a bonding. Whatever contractor was used to do that would have to have a bond with either the school or the county to do that for a $100,000 roof. But with this project, we've already been told the bond won't be with us. The performance bond will be with Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission. And they don't put any money in it, which is the most cockamamie thing I've ever heard of. But that's what they're proposing with this mess. The people that don't have any money in the game have the performance bond. We don't know how that's going to work with our county or any of the other counties for that matter. And, you know, we've just got many hurdles to get over that they could be talking to us about, some of the minutia of a contract agreement, and they're not. And for Mr. Davis to say that, well, there's no point talking to us until he gets his contract with them, he should know how those types of things are going to work with us. And I, I submit that they really don't know either. And that's what worries me is that we've got this looming deadline. And instead of it being this train running down a track and running smooth, it looks to me like it's headed to a train wreck if we don't extend that date so that we can get all this information in place. So, I mean.
And it is possible that the date can be extended. I don't think there's anything that says it can't, but I haven't seen.
Well, we don't know.
Right.
Which only adds time to the process, though.
It would, but we want to get it right, I would think.
Well, if you don't have time to get it right the first time, when are we going to have time later? And we still have this ARDOF thing where a large section of the county won't have service if we don't do it.
That sounds like it's moving forward on the side with just getting the contract or the agreement to allow them, Chantel, to be out of that agreement has to be right before we can sign it. And then DHCD's got to decide. They have $2 million set aside. I think it's their opinion that they want to cover that area, but they've got to have Chantel's back out before they can agree to that.
That's a large section of the county.
No. What did I say wrong?
It's not necessarily true that they have to have Chantel agreeing to file a waiver to fund it. They might fund it regardless of the waiver.
Okay.
You see, there's just so many unknowns.
There are.
I honestly don't understand why there's still so many unknowns.
This whole project is an unknown.
Never been done before.
It's never been done in this state. And through scale and subsidy and through federal dollars, which are not local dollars, they're federal dollars. They came to this county, but they're federal dollars. You know, All Points Broadband, I'll just, I was going to say, was that All Points Broadband, when they talked about this back in August, he kept saying, this is a whole jurisdiction solution and it doesn't work otherwise, so we don't cherry pick. They have done this in other areas. And you can go research it.
Where?
Kentucky, here in the middle area.
But he didn't do it.
Not like, no, All Points Broadband has.
Carr didn't do that. Carr bought a company that did that.
Right, but I'm saying.
Carr has no experience doing this.
He's working on the Northern.
Talking about All Points Broadband. And what they're aiming to do is unprecedented. That is true. And that is why we have to be sitting here talking about this. While not losing sight that I don't think I've talked to a single person who has said to me, they don't want, which is very different than having concerns, which a lot of people do, lots of people. But I have not heard one single person say, don't do it.
Right.
And the commitment, oh yeah, I'm just.
Have I, have I said, don't do it?
No.
Let's let Mr. Carney finish.
No, I was just going to say that the commitment from the school, too, of their funds speaks volumes to me. And, I mean, I agree. I mean, when people tackle these huge projects, I mean, they're just enormous in terms of what they probably have to do in compliance. I mean, there's probably a thousand lawyers working on this thing. Who knows? Who knows what they're. That could be part of the problem.
Poor.
Genuinely. So I just, I've been getting a lot of emails from constituents and I think that we all share our concern, which is that, at least I'm going to speak for myself, is that I want to be able to provide for our citizens something that is unprecedented and everybody wants. I do not want to get the county into a situation that is awful. That would be terrible.
I think that's what we all want. The question is, how do we go about it?
How do, how do we get them to even return our emails?
That's what I was saying is that in terms of an unprecedented project, I bet Brandon and Jimmy are up to here. And I don't know.
They said they could do it.
I already.
It's not going to get any better, though.
But the deal is, is that when they come back to us, we have nothing written on paper. So whatever they've told us, when it comes back on paper, it could be the opposite. Because that's when the contract comes in. That's when we, and to your point, that's when you turn the afterburners on and it's like, well, when is this? Is that in April? Do we have time? What I'm afraid. And, but that's when we actually have stuff we have to really go through. And that's where I am hoping that before I came on the board, you hired Sharon Pandec and we need legal counsel to do that.
Mr. Whitson?
No, and just to dovetail with what Van just said. I mentioned last time we met, we've got very capable legal counsel. And the one question I have is what other, if any, technical counsel do we need when we get to a contract review period of this process? I think Mr. Frazier and frankly, a lot of citizens are right who spoke today that, yeah, there are lots of unanswered questions, but I do think that it's, given the scale of the project, given the money in the aggregate involved, I think, I don't, I always lose track of this, I think it's $200 million or close to it for the eight county.
Total.
Eight county group of which we're a part. So there's strength in numbers there. And presumably, one or more of those localities will bring to bear on this contract review process expertise that we might lack. And if we, if we feel that that's not happening, as I said last time we met, then we certainly should employ our own person or people to review the contract. And I think that would be money well-spent for certain. And if you just give me a second. And then maybe at some logical point in this process, under the current deadlines, or maybe we'll see an extension of deadlines. Professionally, I basically live on extensions. Most of what I write is seeking an extension of what are otherwise statutory deadlines. If, if this is extended, then hopefully we will find a logical opportunity where the Regional Commission folks and representatives from the internet service provider could participate in some kind of town hall meeting. And I think it would be a great thing to do for our citizens because as someone pointed out to me yesterday, we don't have, other than a weekly newspaper that I think has gotten more nimble at doing daily updates, at least the five of us who are on this board, we don't really have a super effective, universal way to disseminate information and updates about projects like this.
We have a website.
That's true. Yeah, that's true. We have a website, but I think, I think enough citizens talked today to really validate Mr. Frazier's idea of at least having the opportunity to ask questions. I do believe that a lot of those questions, while worthwhile to ask, should remain in the hands of our legal counsel and any technical experts that we decide to involve in this project. But certainly, we want our citizens to understand clearly what is going to be delivered, when it's going to be delivered, how it's going to be delivered, and whether it will be delivered to them. So if we can find a logical way to involve the interested parties in some kind of open town hall meeting, I'm all for it. But I will say that I'm not, I definitely will not support a resolution that regardless of date changes or adjustments to your draft, I think it's, it really sends a bad message when there are other ways to hopefully involve the other interested parties to answer our questions. It's a $20 million infrastructure project, 98% funded, currently not a penny of local tax dollars involved. And I just, it's too critical to deliver that to our citizens to do a one-off resolution, basically making threats to the people, we kind of need to work with us right now. That's all I have. Thanks.
I think the glossing over of the funding is really, it doesn't do us any good. It makes us sound like someone's doing us a favor. And there are no favors being done here. We are paying our way. And if we don't talk about paying our way and what we are paying for this project, we are doing our taxpayers a serious disservice. And you can say ARPA is not taxpayer funds, but that is federal dollars. And all federal dollars are taxpayer dollars.
I see.
I understand what you said. I was speaking to Mr. Carney's comments.
I was admitting love.
And I understand what you said. I didn't interrupt you when you were speaking. And I'll just say, as I repeated originally, ARPA funding was given to the county and could be spent on any number of things. If we didn't spend it on this, we could have spent it on something else. If the school didn't spend $370,000 for this, they could have spent it on something else. Those are all taxpayer dollars. And if we are not diligent in the way we spend them because we perceive them as free money, we are doing our constituents a serious disservice. And if we do not spend them diligently because somehow we think we're getting a free ride, we are doing people a serious disservice.
I don't, I would not, I would agree with you. I'm not suggesting that at all.
Well, that's what he said.
I don't believe I've mentioned the phrase, free money.
No, you didn't say free money, but you said it was, it was federal money.
Yeah.
Federal money is also taxpayer money.
One of these days, we're going to have to pay the Chinese back.
Yeah, probably. I do know Senator Obensheim said that the funds had been appropriated. They're already there, so they're going to be spent. And I think we do our citizens a disservice if we're not going to get them fiber to the home and they have the opportunity to have that without any additional funds coming out of their pockets.
We don't know that. That's the problem.
That's exactly the problem.
They won't talk to us and we're running up against these deadlines and we don't know who's going to get service. I mean, the win is not much that we can do. So I'm going to try and, I might have to work backwards on some of this, what Mr. Whitson said. I don't think hiring technical experts, I kind of supported that two weeks ago, but I don't see where it makes any difference because they're going to hang it on poles and they're dealing with REC or Shen Valley or Dominion Electric, so we can't even get involved in that. We don't need a technical expert for that.
I'm talking technical within the, within the written language of the contract. I'm not talking, I'm not talking about construction. I'm talking about what the contract.
All right, well, between our, our legal counsel and Mr. Blenny has years, multiple years of experience and acquisition, I think he could probably be persuaded to give us a hand on that and we wouldn't have to pay for something like that. But this is the thing, I still haven't heard how we're going to get these people to respond to us. If they're not responding to us, how, how do y'all plan on making that happen? And, and I, you know, unless y'all are getting information that we're not getting.
I don't.
Or.
I don't have any additional information.
Okay, well then, I don't know why we're.
I think Mr. Carney said it quite well, and I said it previously, we don't even have a, we don't have a contract in front of us. When we have a contract in front of us, we'll actually have something tangible that will drive questions and we're not going to, for everyone's protection, we're not going to sign a contract that doesn't reflect our expectations about the timeline, the how, the where, the when aspects of this project. Nobody's saying that we're, that we're going to forego an opportunity to review the contract. It's just, we're not there yet. And I think it's very likely based on what I've heard from Mr. Curry and Ms. Donahue that the deadline will be extended to some extent.
If they need it to be, if we need it to be.
I can't, it's like, I can't edit, I can't edit a document if I don't have a document. I can't ask questions about a document if we don't have one to review.
I know, but there's plenty of information they could have given us since September when they put in, they put in that application without even talking to us about the contents of it. And that, and that application was, was approved saying that Rappahannock County will take care of the easement issues. We never even discussed that, let alone authorized them to put that in the agreement. So there's, there's things like that still out there floating around. Then, since then, they could have had, they told us, Carr told us, that they would have informational meetings as soon as they found out if the grants were awarded. That was in December. Nothing. We've had no communication. Neither one of them has come to any meetings. And like I said, and, you know, I don't know if I mentioned it, but Brandon Davis doesn't even return our chair's emails.
They talk to him on the phone.
You talk to him on the phone. And then, then there's a side issue that I have to ask y'all for information so that I can get it instead of y'all sharing it with us automatically. There's such a thing as blind copy, but we don't get that. For some reason, certain computers don't have that function.
I'll be happy to save it as a PDF and send it to you.
But you had agreed to do that months ago when this was brought up.
Not the.
That any communications you put out, we would be privy to it. We don't know till we ask for it. I don't know that Brandon Davis doesn't respond to the emails until I ask. And Mr. Curry says, well, I sent out an email and Mr. Carr's already said he couldn't make the meeting.
And I replied to that one and told you guys that.
So what's the, what's the next big date? What are we waiting on right now?
Like I said before, I'm not sure of the date of the next meeting, telephone meeting of the parties. But we're waiting on DHCD to send their agreement, their template agreement to Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission. I'm waiting on receipt of agreements from the localities. And I agree that the eight counties have to get going with the process of developing an agreement, with or without the state's introduction of a draft.
Good. Are they responding to you?
Who?
Your peers.
I haven't heard from all of them, but I've heard from several of them.
Sounds like progress.
All right.
I mean, I agree that maybe Rappahannock doesn't have to be the one to lead this, but we will if we have to.
You know, after seeing the debacle over there at Warren County, and I don't want to mention it, you know.
You just did.
With their Economic Development Authority, but maybe they shouldn't be the lead. But I won't say anything about that.
You did.
Oh, a positive thing that has just come up with regards to funding, I do have an anonymous donor that has agreed to match up to $150,000. So if we can get the, well, the Northern Piedmont part is up. I've got to advertise it in some way. And the minimum donation would be $5,000, but could come from multiple. Like if each of us put up $1,000, we'd have $5,000 and that match would occur. Like if each of us put up $1,000, we'd have $5,000, and that match would occur. So we've got somebody that wanted to continue with the giving process like Mr. Ockery did and has committed up to $150,000.
Wow. That's big news.
That's amazing. Giving community. All right. Mr. Fraser, you ready?
Well, I, I asked for this, and I would, I would be happy with changing the dates, but I would put this forward in the form of a motion that we, we send some sort of a message, whether it's this resolution which is prepared, or something else. But if we just sit and wait, then we're gonna be treated the same way.
Not clear. Is that a mo, I'm not sure what the motion is, if that's a motion.
Well, that is a convoluted motion, too. You probably want me to repeat it. We could do it in two stages.
If this went different dates or something different.
Could I, could I ask a question before we get into motions and votes real quick? I think the other thing that a lot of folks don't understand is people say, "Well, if you're not gonna do this, well, what are you going to do?" And I, I just want everyone to understand that one of the stipulations of this agreement is that we can't talk to anyone else about doing anything. And so I understand their frustration with, "Well, if you're not gonna take this plan, then what's the plan?" But the fact is, until this runs its course for the duration of the agreement, however long we're in it, we can't make another plan. And, and I, I would also just say, I watched the BCA meeting the other night, and I cringed at how many people interrupted each other. And I would hope that this body not adopt that tradition.
I apologize.
So, so I just wonder, you know, that to me is a huge frustration, especially hearing that ARDOF may be in flux. You know, we could have some very agile plans in place if we could talk to other people. But I think people don't understand that. I believe that to be true. And I wonder if this, you know, multi-year commitment is the best way to roll this out. But I just want people to know that in terms of, you know, getting you broadband, absolutely. I think that is a great idea. Do I have very significant concerns that this is the best way to do it? I sure do. And maybe I have a different perspective from my other peers on this board and this authority because I worked for an ISP, and I worked for an Internet Service Provider that was probably involved in the largest scandal in the industry. And I watched members of our CEO and members of our leadership teams taken off in handcuffs. So I know this is big business, and we have to be very careful about the way we conduct ourselves with the dollar amounts that are in play these days. And I'm not saying anyone's doing anything wrong, or that this is, you know, a similar situation to that. But with my background, I sat there and watched my peers, who had kept their life savings in their company, have to go in and erase all their projections for retirement because they were wiped out at the way a project was mishandled. So I, I do have a lot of trepidation about having our eggs in all one basket. I thought we all did from the very beginning. It's in our mission statement, but we still seem to be only making one choice.
Sorry. Quick question. Do you have specifics about options that you'd like to, if, if...
No, because we can't talk to anyone.
I'll just finish my question, which is that, I was gonna say, do you have specifics about options? If we had not signed an MOU, and previously, when we went out to the world and said, "World, ISP people, come to us. What can you give us?" Now imagine we didn't have the MOU. I'm just wondering what you're thinking. It's like, what could we be doing?
Well, I, I really appreciated Mr. Hyde's response to our request for information, which was that, and I, the longer that I, this plays out, the more true I think it is that this authority is a very newly founded organization, and probably should have had our feet on the ground a little bit more firmly before we went for VODI.
So the one, I was gonna ask the same question. So setting aside the provision in the MOU that precludes us during this time period from entertaining an agreement with an alternative Internet Service Provider, before that, we, as Van said, we went out and asked for interest. And Mr. Hyde commenting on what our authority should be or should not be doing does not speak to the key point there, which is he was in no position to deli, he was in no posi...
I wasn't finished answering his question.
Right. So, so that's the first thing. He was not in a position to deliver anything to us that would work on a, on an expanded, universal basis. And then I asked a very direct question to the new owners of Piedmont Broadband. And I said, "So how many customers, best case scenario, do you intend to serve if you were able to harden your infrastructure through short towers and other means?" And if I remember correctly, I think it was 900, but that already included the customers that they had. So I think it's, I mean, it's clear to me that until we entered into this memorandum of understanding, we had no other viable options. And during this time period, when we're precluded by the provision, that applicable provision from the MOU, from talking to anyone else, I'm not aware of anyone out there with whom we would speak. And on the ARDOF point, and I'm trying to learn here on the spot, it sounds like Chantel is trying to exit the project that they had initially proposed as a wireless-based solution, and that it's very likely, once the, once the wording of, I think, the waiver, or the language of the waiver in the context of our agreement is worked out, they'll be out, and that area will fall into the All Points Broadband coverage area for the county. But we real, I mean, put simply, we don't have anyone else to talk to. And we've been sitting around talking about this for two decades, and we finally have a solution. And yeah, we're not getting answers right now, but I would argue that, again, we're gonna end up with a contract, draft contract in front of us, and so are seven other localities. There is protection in the numbers involved here. And at that point, we engage with the interested parties and our legal counsel and anyone else we think need, we need to bring to bear on a review of this contract. And we make good, informed decisions, and we get this done.
Could I?
I did want to add one thing real quick. I'm so sorry. There was an additional party that was interested in working with us, as they were already, had an interest in the county with ARDOF, and that was Chantel. And Chantel has continued to move forward with Shenandoah County. And no, they did not have a complete response to our request for information when we published it, but they did indicate that they were interested with working with us. And the Shenandoah County Board of Supervisors now has a VODI award with Chantel. And it is a very agile award in that it can be done either via fiber to the home or through tower solutions or a combination thereof. So I, I think that it was our first year really in play, and, and maybe we are not headed down the right road.
In all fairness, though, Piedmont Broadband, because he was sitting right here, your question basically asked him what they were prepared to do with their funding, not with an infusion of cash from this body, from our county. He was put on the spot to ask what he was going to do with their available funding. And, and Carr was asking us, didn't even give us numbers until later, but he said that we would be at about 10% or whatever the cost was. So he was telling us that we were gonna be paying him about 10%, which it turned out to be, you know, the number spread was much larger than that. But this gentleman was put on the spot, what was he gonna provide for the county with his money? So, so it wasn't really a, an even keel that we put him on that night.
Well, I, actually, I asked him, going back to your point about the questions I posed to Mr. Carr about ability to deliver, it was, I can tell you definitively that my line of inquiry with Mr. Carr was precisely in parallel to my line of inquiry with Piedmont Broadband. Both were, both were entirely divorced from any question of funding. I was asking logistics and capacity questions.
But he knew he couldn't qualify for a VODI funding, but he could.
Aside from that, our goal, our goal, our stated goal of, I don't know, the broadband authority of our board, whoever, is to provide universal fiber-to-the-home broadband coverage to the citizens of Rappahannock County, and I am...
With a choice.
I'm sorry?
With a choice.
Anyway, I asked a capacity-related question of both parties. And I think it was an important question to ask because we can all pretend that Piedmont Broadband's in a position to deliver this huge comprehensive solution in the county. But I would argue that they are precisely not the ones to do it, so.
But not if you don't give them any money.
All right. How do we move forward, Mr. Fraser?
Well, there's no point in me putting forth a resolution if I don't have three votes for it, but what do y'all propose?
I think the intent is there. I, I agree that, like, and I agree, there is no free money. We are not gonna do something that doesn't make sense. When we get this contract in, we go over it, and we do not do stuff that does not work for our county. We do not go, you know, head, head over, you know, feet over head doing something that's dumb. We're not, I'm not doing that. We don't have a contract. And I don't care what they told us in August. It's what they put in the contract.
I understand that, but, but they're not talking to us.
I think this sends the wrong signal. I think this says, "Hey," like, I agree. I think it's, I think it's aggressive. And I think it's, this is an unprecedented project, and I, can I imagine that they are up to their ears in work? And I agree.
I think it's unprecedented that we send out emails and they don't respond. That's unprecedented.
It happens to me all the time as a business owner. I send people emails, and I don't get a response back.
So it helps. I won't support this.
But I agree with, you know, I agree with, with what you're saying generally, which is that, hey, we can't do something that doesn't work.
I wonder if maybe...
We just gotta get down the road a little bit further.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm so sorry. I wonder if maybe the best way to present this is in reaching out to the parties involved, just say, "Two out of three of my authority members are really frustrated at the lack of communication and are about ready to pull the plug on this whole thing if we don't start getting answers."
The, the, the math equation there is that all they, all those two members need is one more to join them, and we walk. But we're not presenting that when we have three members that say constantly in meetings and in the paper that we're willing to wait. And I think that's what we need to present to them, is that...
And you can say it as nicely as you want. But that's, that's the heart of the matter, is if two people have serious misgivings and need answers, and would be reluctant to move forward without them, then they should know that they only have three votes.
That's the thing. I want to get information, but I don't see y'all taking a strong enough stand to help me get information from my constituents. But I'm thinking about your constituents, too.
Yeah, I'm thinking about my constituents, and I haven't heard from a single constituent. And a lot of them contacted me after seeing your resolution post-umbord acts.
You, you, you think Mr. Carr's gonna walk away from this because we're being mean to him?
I think it really, I mean, we're, we're, I'm not, I would not agree to s... I, I fully expect we will get a draft contract somewhere along the timeline Mr. Curry's described. I agree with Mr. Carney. We're not gonna enter into something that doesn't, it doesn't protect our interests. We're gonna do that when the time comes, and we've got competent legal counsel who will help us in that regard, and we can bring other people in to help if we need it. But there's no way, on behalf of the 1,500 people that I represent, that I'm gonna send any kind of message, or would agree to send any kind of message, to the interested parties that were conflicted on our board about this. And whatever you do on your own, feel free, but I think it sends a really bad, damaging message that potentially undermines our credibility vis-à-vis this regional agreement. And while I, while I appreciate, while I appreciate the spirit of, of, of your focus on wanting questions answered, I think it is perfectly reasonable, given the scope and complexity of this project, that we need to be a little bit patient, and we have not signed a darn thing. And we're not gonna sign a darn thing until we're all comfortable with what we're signing, and we're not there yet. So hopefully, Mr. Curry will continue working with his peers in the meantime, and he'll talk with the folks in the Middle Peninsula who've been through those, and we'll get a template agreement from DHCD, and we can all wrestle with that whenever we meet. So I'm good with that.
Well, first off, I thought we were gonna get those template agreements a long time ago, and we didn't get them yet, unless somebody has them, and I don't have a copy of it, because I certainly don't have it. But you know I'm not gonna contact these people on my own because when we first started this process, I had to caution y'all to not do that as individuals because it makes us look bad. So you know I'm not gonna do that.
I think it's okay if you have questions.
No, individuals should not do that because it makes us look weak. We keep giving up with little bargaining strategy we have by doing things that are unprofessional. We should be speaking with one voice, and that should be the chair or somebody else that's been delegated with this, to reach out to these, you know, the principals and say X, Y, and Z. But I'm tired of doing that because all we're doing is educating them. If they don't know what they're doing, then all we're doing is giving them a week or two to, to study the issue. They need to be here and answer some of these very germane questions that are very basic to part of this project. It, it doesn't matter if it's eight counties or one county. They've got, they've got to do something with Culpeper County on their own. They're doing something with eight counties here. If he's actually done this in the, in the Middle Peninsula or, or Northern neck, then he should be able to answer a series of questions right there on the floor or, or, you know, via Zoom or whatever, and it's not happening. We still have these very basic questions.
Why is there hesitation to send the questions in writing?
Because we're just educating him. If they can't answer some of these questions standing right there, or as soon as we ask him, then he doesn't know what he's doing. I mean, we had the engineer, and I asked him about a rock clause. They kept talking about the 199. And that was another point of contention with me, is that he gave several county boards of supervisors different answers to the question of the, of the basic install. But anyway, I won't, I don't want to be backtracking there, but the thing is, he ought to be able to give us the answer to a question when we ask it. And it should be the same question that he gives all eight members. So it's not rocket science, and it's not asking them to recreate the wheel, and, and for us to, to come up with a question and then ask him, and then he gets back to us in a week or two. All we're doing is educating him, because if he cannot answer simple questions like that, then he doesn't understand what he's doing.
I don't know how we move forward on this. We've got the rest of the agenda to go through. If you want to make a motion, let's move forward.
Well, y'all aren't gonna support it. What I want to do is, is figure out some kind of way to get this information that we need. When, when are we going to have them actually address our emails and show up to talk to us about some of the basic issues of this whole contract?
Maybe you can just, wait, try to find a logical way to...
I mean, in my mind, I need a timeline. If I had a timeline, I would think I would feel...
No, I think, I think Ms. Smith had it. Find out when they can be here, and then we make a timeline that we can, we can talk to them.
No, I meant a project timeline. Sorry. I mean, the DHCD contract, the All Points contract, the All Points and Eight County contract, all of that, in my mind, is, I would really like to understand how that process is going. And that, I'm fine asking, because I think I would assume they can get back to that.
It'll inform a lot.
Yeah. I just, I feel comfortable with that. I'm not gonna sign something that is terrible for our people. I'm not doing that. And, you know, if we don't get an answer from now, maybe that's the way they do business. Maybe it's not great, but that's what we're looking at, and currently, we're not on the hook for it. And, I don't know. I run a business. I deal with stuff like this all the time, and...
But you continue to buy stuff from somebody that won't answer your emails? I don't understand that.
Interesting question. Bigger companies tend to take longer, but anyway.
All right.
Can we move on to the next agenda item?
Well, does the next agenda item concern both bodies?
No. So we need to adjourn the broadband authority.
So what, what, what actions being taken?
None.
You're not gonna contact them and tell them that you have two members with serious heartburn?
No, I will not do that. I will contact them and see if I can get a timeline that would give us a little bit of understanding of how much of a panic we should be in, if at all, with our May deadline for the contract. And if you have specific questions, I'm happy to send them.
I'm tired of giving them specific questions. If they won't show up, they don't know what they're doing. And that's what, that's my greatest concern, is that they don't know what they're doing. The project is too big for them. I think they, they proved that.
Do I have a motion to...
Maybe they could do it with more time.
I wonder, too, when would be the best time to have more public input on this? Because going back to my point earlier today, this is like a, this is a big deal. I mean, y'all said it. It's a big planning, and, and to my mind, a development issue. And I think we should have robust public input on this. And I don't think we've had a meeting where we had a lot of input on this.
You mean other than public comment or what do you mean?
Do you mean specific to the project?
And where it's publicized and, um, and maybe the best time is when we get the contract.
Right, and we'll be reviewing that publicly.
I wanted to make a point that I, I don't think there's been enough, um, public. I, I don't think there's been ample opportunity for public feedback on this. And I really think we should bear that in mind as we schedule the future.
I think it's a really good idea that when we do get that contract, let's make sure that we do do that.
Oh, communication is huge. Yep.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, for sure.
Can I have a motion to adjourn the broadband authority?
I moved.
I have a motion.
I'll gladly second that.
Okay, thank you. Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, information reports and correspondence. Board committee reports. Building committee, I think we heard.
Well, you pretty much heard everything that the building committee was working on, correct?
Recreational facilities authority.
Uh, um, we, uh, talked about the fodder stack, which is going very well. And, um, that's pretty much it. It was a, um, kind of more of just a quick informational meeting. We did have a quick discussion about, um, r- really interesting, um, about plowing snow. Because now the bathrooms are heated and open year-round, so we have this issue now of folks trying to have access. And do we have a liability issue there? You know, do we need that? So how do we do that? How do we, how do we, how do we do that? Um, yeah, that's, that about sums it up.
Public safety committee?
Uh, Madam Chair, you, you were a member of the public safety committee too, so you were there as well. But, uh, we had a, um, I think a pretty good meeting all, all in all. And, um, we covered several topics. One was the, uh, the, uh, building, um, taking over the magistrate's building to run the, uh, paid staff out of. And the, um, I guess, uh, we, we discussed, uh, the insurance issue. We discussed, uh, the problem with company four that is ongoing. Actually, I don't, I don't know what's going to be happening there, but it is a sad situation all the way around.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm afraid my mind's kind of blank right now. I didn't bring notes on, on all the subjects that we touched on. But I think that there were, uh, some, some complaints about the way that the sheriff's office was handling, uh, dispatch. But I think overall, everyone is, uh, is, uh, in agreement that, that what they're doing is the proper way.
So I think the winter storms, um.
Oh, the winter storm situation, yeah. Um, yeah, I don't know about trying to provide water to people with horses because you're not going to drink chlorine water anyway. But, uh, I mean, horse, horses, people with horses are no different than anybody else with livestock. They're going to have to make up their own, uh, backup plans, I think. So, uh, uh, all in all, I think, uh, we got a good, about as good a response as we could get because that snow was heavy. Broken branches, trees, lines going down. Uh, you got to have a process and the process would be to get the roads open, get the lines disconnected before you can start rebuilding it. I think it worked out about as best as it could be.
Thank you. Rules committee?
Did not meet.
Planning commission update?
Strangely, we didn't, uh, meet. We lacked in physical form. That's partly my fault. I was, um, gone. And then a few other people had emergencies and things come up. Um, but we did fortunately meet shortly after the, um, the canceled planning commission meeting. And that work session revolved so solely around the kickoff of the Berkeley Group project that we've already discussed at some length, so.
Fire levy?
Uh, fire levy had its meeting and we approved all submissions. Uh, we had a robust discussion though about, um, a category that, uh, and I'm new on the board obviously, but a category for, um, community outreach, um, fire prevention, education, that would be separate from fundraising. And there apparently used to be a category for recruitment and retention, which was, which is no longer, uh, there. There were some companies that did, you know, pretty much, uh, fire prevention education days and had coloring books and that sort of thing and did not fundraise. And, uh, there's a discussion that is now going to go back through the chiefs and the association to uh, see how they would like to handle it and then come back to fire levy and then, uh, fire levy will then make recommendations to the BOS. So that discussion happened. Did I get everything, Gary?
Perfect.
All right, um, going into the treasurer's report. And if you guys, if there are items that we can skip, I would love to get to this basketball game, but I know these are important conversations, so.
Well, I think we can, we can talk about that, um, as part of our budget discussion, which is two days from now. I'm, in my view, I've got some thoughts, so.
And the numbers look good. Uh, up, update on county administrator? You good?
Reports are attached.
Yep. And I think the rest of the reports are, reports are attached. Anything anybody would like to pull out to talk about? Okay. Um, going to go to the matters presented by the board. Mr. Fraser?
I think I've presented all I'm going to today.
Ms. Smith?
I tried to get everything on the agenda. I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Whitson?
I'm done.
Mr. Carney?
I would just like to thank, uh, Jeff Atkins. Yes, Mr. Atkins.
Tommy, Tommy.
Uh, yeah, Jeff.
Jeff's the coach.
Oh, okay, yeah.
For doing an incredible job and I, uh, wish everybody, uh, Godspeed and good luck tonight.
Yeah, Jeff's great.
It's incredible what he has done and, uh, we have a good, good person in Jeff, so thanks a lot.
Yeah, he is awesome. Sorry, I thought you were.
No, I thought I met you.
Well, thanks for Tommy too, for highlighting that. Thank all the Atkins.
Doesn't? And he's got two daughters that are on the team.
Our better community, that's right.
Yeah, we love saying it, our, uh, so, yeah.
All right, um, motion.
I never made the connection.
I'll, I'll, I'll put forward a motion to the jury.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Go Panthers.
You're going to make it, Debbie?
I'm going to make it.
You're going to make it.
You're not?